Good morning, everyone. It is Tuesday, September the 17th, and it's 9:00 AM. And I'd like to welcome everybody to the Board of County Commissioners meeting. And with that, I'd like to call this meeting to order and just ask that you take a moment of silence. Commissioner Smith?
Please rise. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item D, minutes for approval. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. We have a lot of resolutions here, so just bear with us. Lot of important people that we want to recognize today. Commissioner Smith, I believe you have the first one.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Greg Hanson. Hi Greg, how are you today?
Good.
I'll read the resolution and then we'll give you the floor.
Sure.
Whereas hunger and poverty are issues of great concern in Brevard County and throughout the United States, and whereas Brevard County is committed to taking steps to raise awareness about the need to combat hunger in every part of our state and to help provide additional resources that Central Florida residents need, and whereas Brevard County is committed to working with Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida to eradicate our residents -- educate, I'm sorry, educate our residents about the role and importance of food banks in addressing hunger and raising awareness of the need to devote more resources and attention to hunger issues, and whereas more than 77,000 Brevard County residents and 21,000 Brevard County children rely on food provided by the members of the Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida each day. That's an amazing number. Whereas, the members of Second Harvest Food Bank of Central Florida distributed more than seven million meals to Brevard County in 2018 through its network of food pantries, soup kitchens, shelters, and other community organizations, and whereas food banks across the country will host numerous events throughout the month of September that bring awareness and attention to the problem of food insecurity while encouraging involvement in efforts to end hunger in our local communities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida do hereby proclaim September 2019 as Hunger Action Month in Brevard County, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of September 2019. Madam Chair, I move to accept this proclamation.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Go ahead.
Greg, you have the floor.
Thanks again for once again bringing awareness to our county with this issue. As you mentioned, those numbers, it's about one out of six individuals in our county are food insecure. If one hardship were to hit them, not knowing where the next meal would come from, whether it be hurricane, stress, medical issue, so we have a long ways to go. Our mission is to resource and distribute as much food as we can to those in need. We do that by partnering with over 80 faith-based organizations and social service organizations throughout the county. And as you mentioned, seven million pounds of food was distributed last year. So we do have a long way to go, and thank you for this resolution and your awareness to this cause.
Seven million pounds, you can't comprehend that. That's a lot of food for you folks to manipulate and distribute.
There still is a large need out there, so thank you.
Just like to mention, sir, our church, that's like my day life, we get food from you, and we're able to feed over 150 families a month because of y'all's ministry. And I just -- yes, sir. Thank you so much.
I want to know why every time I take one of these pictures. It's always with these guys. [laughter]
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The daughters of the American Revolution, y'all want to come up? I'm going to read this resolution, and then if you guys would like to say a few words, it would be wonderful to hear from you today. Whereas September the 17th, 2019 marks the 232nd anniversary of drafting our constitutions of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorial -- memorable anniversary, I think I got the Kurt Smith thing here, and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion, whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through 23rd to the Constitution Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution, what they had in 1787 by diligently, I think I said that right, protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of liberties, remembering that the lost rights may never be regained, done and ordered and adopted this regular session the 17th day of September 2019. Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I'd just like to say thank you for recognizing the DAR and for proclaiming this Constitution Week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Patrick? Bring up your friends, too. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, Kirk.
Whereas, the United States is a nation of legal immigrants, and the contribution of our legal immigrants to the defense of the public liberty has been above and beyond what the proportion of immigrants in the general population would indicate, and whereas John Barry, native of the county of Wexford, Ireland, volunteered his services and was commissioned a captain in the Continental Navy on October 10th, 1775, and soon afterwards in command of the Lexington, gave us one of our first victories at sea with the capture of the Royal Navy sloop Edward. And whereas Captain John Barry was principally responsible for organizing the crossing of the Delaware, which led directly to Washington's great victory at Trenton during Christmas 1776, and whereas Captain Barry rejected General Lord Howes flattering offer to desert Washington and the patriot cause stating, "Not the value and command of the whole British fleet can lure me from the cause of my country." And whereas Captain John Barry, in command of the frigate alliance, successfully transported French gold to America to finance the War of Independence, and also won the last sea battle off the coast of Florida on March 10th, 1783, and the United States Congress recognized him as the premier American naval hero of the war, and whereas Commodore Barry organized the attendance of members of the Constitution and recommended it to the states for ratification. Whereas it was Commodore John Barry who built and commanded the United States Navy and the squadron, which included his flagship, the USS United States Old Ironsides, and the USS Constitution, and who is recognized as one of the six foreign-born great leaders of the War of Independence. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby unanimously proclaim September 13th as Commodore John Barry Day in Brevard County in honor of his memory and in recognition of the sentiments of the Navy veterans, Irish Americans, and the patriotic population that our history be properly told, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of September 2019. Madam Chair, I move to pass this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Smith. Second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
God bless Brevard County. Thank you.
Amen.
Thank you.
It's nice and to the point.
They had five o'clock on here. Did we clap yet?
You want to keep going, Commissioner Smith?
All right, we're on a roll. Karina, John. Come on, John. Thank you for being here. Whereas, the Brevard County Public Works is comprised of the following programs: public works, administration, finance, road and bridge maintenance, engineering, traffic operations, facilities, and surveying and mapping. And whereas Brevard County residents rely on public works for vital infrastructure, including transportation, water drainage, ditches, and canals, depending on these services and operations each and every day, as well as during emergencies and imminent threats of natural disasters. And whereas the readiness and effectiveness of these services, as well as their planning, design, and construction, is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skills of our public works employees. And whereas Brevard County Public Works are the unsung heroes, working countless hours behind the scenes, serving the public to keep the lives of citizens running smoothly and safely. Now therefore be it resolved that the Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby commend the outstanding contributions which our public works employees make each and every day while supporting the citizens of our great county, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of September 2019. Madam Chair, I make a motion to pass this resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
You have the floor. And this is an opportunity to educate the people how important you guys are to our county, because you truly are the unsung heroes.
Well, I did keep my little brief speech here, but I wanted to first thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm honored to accept this recognition on behalf of Public Works. Many of our employees are sitting at their computers, watching their monitors, and would rather do that than be publicly recognized. They like to work behind the scenes, and they're perfectly satisfied with that, including me. Much of the public is unaware of the work that is involved with preparing the county for a storm that's coming. It's a lot of work to maintain the health and safety of our residents. Public Works is in the forefront when weather turns rough. A lot of effort goes into clearing ditches, making sure our drainage systems are working properly. And immediately after the storm passes, we're out there before the winds subside. We want to make sure we get the roads clear and the traffic signals operational for our residents, but also for our first responders, because that's, you know, they need to get out there and save lives. So that's really important to us. While we're fortunate that Dorian finally decided to move and turn north and away from Brevard County, Public Works was ready to go and do whatever it takes to be there for our county, for our residents. I'm extremely proud of our team and their ability to pull together during these times. We've done it since I've been here, we've done it two times before during, when we had real, the real threat impacting us, and they just, they're amazing how they come together and respond. Luckily, we got a pass this time, but whenever the public needs us, we're there and we're always willing to go above and beyond. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
John, I know you want to say a few words.
Not really, but I will say that I'm proud of our Public Works group and all of the folks that help us be successful in a variety of ways, much of which goes unnoticed unless it doesn't get done, then it gets noticed. And I'm proud of Karina for the work she's been doing to help lead the Public Works Department.
You want to keep going?
Okay. Jeez, I didn't even have to say anything. You guys must have a real power of -- I don't know what you have a power of.
We can read.
Oh, you can read.
I was going to tell you to hustle, but I didn't want to embarrass you.
Thank you all for being here. Whereas, historically, many destructive and deadly tropical storms and hurricanes have impacted Brevard County, and whereas during the Atlantic hurricane season, which occurs June 1st through November 30th, our 72-mile coastline and miles inland are vulnerable to high winds, storm surge, flooding, and tornadoes in conjunction with a hurricane or tropical storm. And whereas the people of Brevard County owe an enormous debt of gratitude to the Brevard County Fire Department under the direction of Fire Chief Mark Schumeyer for their commitment to Brevard County residents, and whereas the Brevard County Fire Department bravely and selflessly risked their lives to prepare and facilitate throughout the Atlantic hurricane season and beyond, and whereas it is likely people and property in Brevard County would have suffered tremendous loss had our Brevard County Fire Department not provided their dedication and services. Whereas Brevard's first responders are there for us 24 hours a day, seven days a week. They are our defense in maintaining safety at all levels, at all times, and especially during our Atlantic hurricane season. Brevard calls upon all citizens to give special tribute to the Brevard County Fire Department, who provides safety for Brevard citizens above and beyond their call to duty. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby recognize and express its gratitude to the Brevard Fire Department, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of September 2019. Madam Chair, I make a motion to pass this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
So I'm a little apprehensive about accepting this resolution a little over halfway through the Atlantic hurricane season, so excuse me if I'm short. So a lot of people don't realize, much like Public Works, the amount of work that goes on, you know, pre-storm, during the storm, and post-storm. A lot of assets are moved around, a lot of preparation, we have policies and procedures to follow, and they are flexible enough to allow us to respond in a storm condition, especially with an unpredictable storm like the last one we just had. Fortunately, we've been lucky over the past few years, and that both concerns me and makes me happy. So if it wasn't for the dedication and commitment of our hundreds of employees of BCFR, it wouldn't work, it wouldn't happen, and I'm just thankful for them each and every day. So give a thanks to our staff officers, our men and women on the streets that make it happen each and every day. Thank you very much.
Now it's time for everybody's favorite sheriff.
He's fading away on us. Every time I see you, you look like you've lost more weight. You look great.
I'm trying to, so.
Yeah, I didn't recognize. I walked in, I said, "Who's the skinny guy in the green suit?"
That's keto. Keto works, so. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Commissioner, before you start, can I do one thing, sir?
Sure.
I just, our fire chief, is he still here, Mark? Where you at? He didn't get a chance to introduce his daughter, Aubrey, who's wearing a deputy's uniform over there?
Yes.
Not that I meant anything by that or anything, just.
Well, now we know she's here.
That would be a deputy for the sheriff's department, not a deputy in the fire ranks.
That's correct. She's wearing the deputy sheriff's uniform.
Okey-dokey. Whereas, historically, many destructive and deadly tropical storms and hurricanes have impacted Brevard County, and whereas during the Atlantic hurricane season, which occurs each and every year in the summer from June 1st to November 30th, as I mentioned before, our coastline and miles of inland are vulnerable to high winds and storms. Whereas the people of Brevard County owe an enormous debt of gratitude to the Brevard County Sheriff's Department under the direction of Sheriff Wayne Ivey for their commitment to Brevard County residents, and whereas the Brevard County Sheriff's Department bravely and selflessly risked their lives to prepare and facilitate throughout the hurricane season and beyond, whereas it is likely people and property in Brevard County would suffer tremendous loss had not our Brevard County Sheriff's Department given their dedication and services. And whereas Brevard's first responders are there for us 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and they are our defense in maintaining safety at all levels, at all times, but especially during the hurricane season. Brevard calls upon all citizens to offer special tribute and recognition to Brevard County Sheriff's Department, whom provides safety for Brevard citizens above and beyond their call to duty. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida does hereby recognize and express its gratitude to the Brevard County Sheriff's Department, done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of September 2019. Madam Chair, make a motion to pass this resolution.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Smith, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Well, first and foremost, thank you for recognizing our team, and Madam Chair, thank you guys for accepting this motion. The team that you see standing around us is only a small portion of, obviously, our agency and those that work so hard and diligently during Hurricane Dorian, but it also extends to the team that you see sitting in the seats right here from the EOC and our firefighter partners and our local police departments that all worked so closely with us to make sure everyone was safe during the storm. It also extends to, again, a small portion of the inmates that worked so hard throughout the storm in preparation, making sure that our citizens had sandbags. Collectively, that team with not only our inmates, but their crew supervisors, distributed over 70,000 sandbags to citizens here in Brevard County, and that extends to the Public Works Department as well, who was making sure we had all the supplies we needed, everything that we could do. And, you know, those that are standing here with us, they have family here in Brevard County. This was an opportunity for them to make sure their family was taken care of and to be a part of helping our community prepare, so my hat's off to them as well for all they did. It's a team effort, and part of that team extends to our community, who without question followed everything we asked them to do. They worked with us, they followed all of our advisories and everything else, trying to make sure they were as prepared as possible. And I tell everybody, it takes a community to protect a community, and our community understands that, because they worked with us diligently. In fact, I think a true testament of that is that we were the only county around us, anywhere in the state of Florida, that did not have a curfew. And the reason we didn't have a curfew, because we have citizens here that understand that we're out here working every day to keep them safe. So this is a team effort, and I thank you so much for recognizing all of the efforts of this team.
Thank you, Sheriff.
It's a big crowd.
If you can't see me, I can't see you, so you might be hidden.
Kimberly? While Kimberly and her team are making their way up here. I just wanted, after I saw all the efforts, and I know firsthand what Christine went through, I was chair two years ago when Irma came through, and I just realized that we have so many people that work so hard behind the scenes when we have a hurricane breathing down our necks, that I just wanted to give recognition to those folks. So that's why we're doing all this today. Thank you. Whereas, Brevard County Emergency Operations Center, led by Kimberly Prosser, was activated to a Level 1 full-scale activation prior to, during, and following Hurricane Dorian, and whereas Brevard County Emergency Operations Center is responsible for the disaster preparedness of our residents, communication and coordination of emergency services before, during, and after a disaster, development of contingency and preparedness plans, and providing education on how to prepare for and reduce the effects of disasters. And whereas the Brevard County EOC is an independent department of the county government, reporting to the Board of County Commissioners through the county managers reporting to the Board of County Commissioners through the County Manager's Office. And whereas, the Brevard EOC's mission is to provide Brevard County residents, businesses, and industries, nonprofit organizations, and local governments the education and support necessary to reduce the loss of life and human suffering, to minimize property damage, and to protect environmentally sensitive areas from all types of disasters through a comprehensive, risk-based, all-hazard emergency management program. And whereas, the Brevard EOC coordinated essential Brevard County departments and staff, including 550-plus Brevard County employees from animal shelters, Department of Parks and Recreation, and Public Works, to name a few, staffed three special needs, four pet-friendly, and six general population shelters, 13 of the emergency support functions, and the 2-1-1 Brevard in support of 24-hour operations. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby commend the Brevard EOC for their devoted efforts during the Hurricane Dorian emergency. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the seventh day of September 2019. Madam Chair, one more time.
Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
I'd like to thank you for this recognition. Our department has three divisions: 800 megahertz public safety radio administration, E911 administration address assignment, and emergency operations management. And all of the team works together on these types of things, but it's more important that we work together with our other partners, the three departments you mentioned earlier: Housing and Human Services, Parks and Recreation, and many other cities, state and federal agencies, nonprofit partners. It takes a true team effort, so we appreciate this recognition on behalf of all of us.
Thank you.
And for all of your hard work.
Thank you.
All right. Romeo, will come up? Okay, I'm going to read the resolution, and then you can speak if you like after. Whereas Filipino-Americans are the second-largest Asian-American group in the nation, and whereas the Filipino-American Association of Brevard County was founded in 1974 by a group of military personnel and their spouses from Patrick Air Force Base, and has hundreds of active members of diverse origins and backgrounds, having the common goal of sharing and preserving Filipino cultural heritage. And whereas, the celebration of the Filipino-American History Month in October commemorates the first recorded presence of Filipinos in the continental United States, which occurred on October 18th, 1587, when Luzonos Indios came ashore from Spanish Gallean in Morro Bay, California. And whereas, Filipino-American servicemen and women have a longstanding history in the armed forces from the Civil War to the Iraq and Afghanistan conflicts, including the 25,000 Filipinos who fought under the U.S. flag during World War II to protect and defend this country. And whereas, 2019 also marks the 75th anniversary of the return of General Douglas MacArthur and the U.S. forces to the Philippines via the Lette landings on October 20th, 1944, which was the first step in liberating the Philippines from Japanese. And whereas, the Florida Space Coast Filipino-American Charitable Educational Foundation Incorporated is commemorating the 75th anniversary of the significant event in American history with the gala at the Crown Plaza in Indian Atlantic on October 26th. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize October 2019 as Filipino-American History Month, and joins them in commemorating the 75th anniversary of the Lette landings. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of September, AD 2019. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Good morning. I'm Carrie Anderson, presently the chairman of the Space Coast Filipino-American Charitable Educational Foundation, SFESEF, and we are very proud and happy to represent our Filipino-American group here in this county. We thank you, and we owe you an enormous piece of our hearts. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Smith, and the rest of the commissioners, I'm already standing. Romeo de la Paz, Executive Director of the Foundation. To highlight and to share the impact of the return of the U.S. forces to the Philippines, I hope you will indulge me to read some of the highlights of that return. That events that happened in October through the Lette landings, as well as the battle for Lette Gulf, involve the third and seventh fleets of the U.S., and also, it involves 200,000 troops. It had also the participation of 1,500 aircrafts. PT boats were 44, destroyers 141, Hibbi cruisers 11, battleships 12, escort carriers 15, light carriers 8, and fleet carriers 8. This also had the involvement of the Australian Navy, and for the Filipino guerrillas, there were estimated 3,500 guerrillas supporting this event. I am happy also to inform you and the material that I shared with you about the untold triumph. This is the manuscript that is the basis for a documentary of Filipinos who were recruited here in the United States and became the first Filipino infantry. I am holding this dog tag of one of them. 7,000 of them were participated in this Lette landings. And so, we are here to tell this story as a part of American history. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. All right. They have our agenda different from the online version because we have new software, so I just had to pull up the resolution.
Sure.
And you'll talk after?
Sure.
Tell us about, a little bit about what you do, and, because I was impressed the first time I saw everything. It was amazing. Okay, resolution. Whereas, recognizing a need for domestic violence shelter services in Brevard, the county provided critical funding for the first shelter to open its doors to survivors 35 years ago. And whereas, the Salvation Army Brevard County Domestic Violence Program is a certified domestic violence center, whose mission is to provide a safe and empowering environment for survivors of domestic violence to escape abuse and to educate the community about the problem. And whereas, approximately 3,900 domestic violence crimes are reported to law enforcement each year in Brevard County. And whereas, the Salvation Army Domestic Violence Program serves survivors through free confidential services such as domestic violence shelter, 24-hour hotline, counseling, advocacy, referrals, and safety planning. And whereas, the organization provided counseling and advocacy services to 545 domestic violence survivors, and 278 adults and children were provided safe shelter last year. And whereas, the organization strives to spread awareness through education and training services and a primary prevention initiative that teaches healthy relationships, education in elementary schools, and engages teens in the topic of dating violence. And whereas, the Salvation Army Domestic Violence Program collaborates with numerous agencies to deliver innovative services and improve system responses to domestic violence and to improve victim safety and increase abuser accountability. And now therefore be resolved that Brevard County Board of County Commissioners does hereby recognize the Salvation Army Brevard County Domestic Violence Program as they celebrate the 35 years of support for domestic violence survivors and continue their commitment to end domestic violence in our community. Done, ordered, and adopted in regular session the 17th day of September, AD 2019. Can I get a motion?
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Firstly, I want to say thank you very much for your support and for the recognition of our anniversary.
Thank you. I'm here with staff and volunteer to help us celebrate, and we so appreciate you recognizing this important milestone for us. It's hard to imagine that over, you know, just over 35 years ago, there wasn't a domestic violence shelter in this county. And the county's support backing that opening made it happen. You know, the first shelter, just imagine that. And over the years, we have served thousands of survivors of domestic violence. I mean, there are people who are alive today, I believe, that are here because services like this are available. And so, we just wanted to thank you and also invite you to, we are having a celebratory anniversary breakfast, October 2nd, at the Center for Collaboration, and so we want to honor all of the folks who have helped make this happen over the years, and looking forward to how we end domestic violence, which is the whole point. So, we thank you. Thank you for all you do. Thanks. All right. I don't know, Commissioner Lober, did you want to do yours now, or did you want to wait?
Unless we have any, unless we have anyone here on that item, I think we can wait till the end.
Okay.
Let's do that, just to get everything else moving.
Commissioner Lober has another resolution, but we're going to do it under a different category, so we'll move on to Item F. Consent agenda?
Do we have any cards?
Nope.
Okay. Motion approved?
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, a second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Peter, I don't want to mispronounce this.
Carnisal?
Is it Carnisal?
Carnisal.
Okay. I didn't want to butcher it and insult you, sir.
Okay.
So, just give me your name and address, or your name and your city.
Okay. I'm Pete Carnisal, 1910 Independence Avenue. I live in the IRCC community, and basically, all of you have been basically getting a whole slew of emails from IRCC, probably caused by me initially with one of my emails that came in August, especially to Mr. Smith, because he is our commissioner and our representative, and he has been kind enough to set me up with an appointment for just a couple, about a week from now. But the issue itself basically is a turn lane. On Vieira Boulevard right now, okay, there is a safety issue in terms of the residents coming in from headed east on Vieira Boulevard. Until recently, when all of the widening of the road occurred, there was an unofficial turn lane because the road narrowed to a single lane off to the left just immediately following the entrance. Once the widening was done, that unofficial turn lane disappeared. Apparently, during all the planning, that was not taken into consideration because it existed at the time, there was no problem. Right now, the people that are coming in headed east along Vieira Boulevard, that are coming in there, are either having to slow down to like 10 miles an hour or less in the event there's a golf cart going by or a bicycle going by, then we may actually physically have to stop. Okay? Yet, all the traffic behind them is moving along at 40 miles plus. I say 40 miles because that's the speed limit. Okay? We all know that that's not really the speed that most people are doing. And it's just a matter of time before somebody going at 40 to 50 miles an hour will wind up smashing into one of those residents that's standing still before they make the turn. There's two reasons why they can't make the turn immediately at any decent speed. Number one is it's a single-lane entry when they go in. Number two is there's a basic, there is a blockage of view, so they can't see what's already there. Okay? Number three is that there's a very short entranceway before a gated entry to the Independence, on Independence Avenue, which really can't be moved because there's a lake in front of it. Okay? So, my first reaction would be, okay, no problem, just move the gate forward, but that can't be done because of the fact that there's a lake in front of it, and the road that basically disallows that. So, as a result, the safety issue has occurred.
I don't want to cut you off, but I have to.
That's no problem. Thank you.
Thank you so much, sir.
And thank you, Commissioner Smith, for setting up the appointment.
Sandra Sullivan?
Good morning, Commissioner Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. First, from my heart, I want to thank you all, because I know everybody worked together to get the FUDS eligibility for South Patrick Shores. So, I'm so excited, and I want to thank you all, because I know I sent a lot of emails and advocating, and I know a lot of people quietly were, you know, working that, different levels of the government. So, I just want to start with that. Now that we have the FUDS eligibility, and the acknowledgement that this is a military dump, I would like consideration to delay the dredging, because it was not tested for some of the contaminants associated with military disposal sites, including munition chemicals, which are carcinogenic, according to an EPA 2015 study. So, when you look at the Muck Sediment Report that this was based on, that report was outdated because it didn't take into account the munition chemicals. It also didn't really take in account, it didn't take account the PFOS and PFOA, which there has been some testing, but we feel is inadequate. My third point is that we still have...
Good morning, Commissioner Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. First, from my heart, I want to thank you all, because I know everybody worked together to get the FUDS eligibility for South Patrick Shores. So, I'm so excited, and I want to thank you all, because I know I sent a lot of emails and advocating, and I know a lot of people quietly were, you know, working that, different levels of the government. So, I just want to start with that. Now that we have the FUDS eligibility, and the acknowledgement that this is a military dump, I would like consideration to delay the dredging, because it was not tested for some of the contaminants associated with military disposal sites, including munition chemicals, which are carcinogenic, according to a EPA two thousand and fifteen study. So, when you look at the muck sediment report that this was based on, that report was outdated because it didn't take into account the munition chemicals. It also didn't really take in account, it didn't take account the PFOS and PFOA, which there has been some testing, but we feel is inadequate. My third point is that we still have not been able to successfully get a cancer and ALS assessment out of the Department of Health, and we'd like to ask your help with that. Because last month, my neighbor three doors down passed away of a rare sarcoma. She had the cockpit in her backyard. We just had another diagnosis on southeast First Street that makes three cases of ALS presently. The incident rate is two per hundred thousand, and we're talking maybe there's a hundred people on that street. So, we very much need that. My next point is I would like to give you guys this book and ask if you would read it, maybe bring it back to each meeting and hand it off to the next commissioner. My son, at twelve years old, took a fourth-year FAU course, and this was the curriculum material. It's about if you start destroying the wetlands, like for Vieira Company or other developments on those wetlands for St. John's, you're going to impair the water quality. So this book is going to be very informative, and I hope will change in time some of the decisions by the county commissioners. Lastly, we'd like to ask you guys to do an impact study for three-two-nine-three-seven. You have a lot of intermodal changes. You have, Penea Causeway is going to be expanded out to, as a beeline to Orlando. We have so much traffic right now, it's like peak season, but it's not peak season, it's off-season. So, and our water quality is very poor. I'd like to bring this up, and you can feel the water, it's slippery and waxy. We have reports all the time to Melbourne Water. There needs to be a full impact study, so all the cities can collaborate to, so we don't over. Thank you.
I'm not going to read it, to be honest.
Want to take that?
Sure, I'll take a look, and I'll bring it back later. I know there's, I'd otherwise be getting a look from Ms. Bentley here, but I'll get this back to you unless one of the other commissioners wants to take a look at it.
If you could pass it through to the commissioners and...
Sure, but eventually we'll get it back to you, once everyone's had a chance to glance at it that wants to do so.
Commissioner Lober?
Just real briefly, this is more of a natural resources question. In terms of the PFOS and the PFOA testing, what was done and what more could be done with respect to that?
We tested muck, six muck samples from the canals in the Grand Canal Project area. One off of, a seventh sample off of Patrick Air Force Base, and an eighth sample down south of Melbourne shores as a sort of control. The six samples that came back for the Grand Canal, the levels, I don't have the data in front of me, but the highest measurement was eight-point-something. The standard that is available out there today is twelve-hundred-and-sixty, for comparison.
In terms of what's acceptable environmentally?
Yes. We also tested the surface water. We did surface water grabs at each of those same six locations in the Grand Canal, as well as a number of stations in the Banana River and the Indian River. The Grand Canal stations were no, you know, no more contaminated than the rest of the lagoon. The levels in the lagoon did go up to just over a hundred in a couple locations. The drinking water standard is seventy, so some of the lagoon's surface waters are, have a higher concentration of PFAS in them than the drinking water standard, but we're not drinking salty water from the lagoon. All of the testing that we did in the deep wells, which is, if people have their own irrigation wells, those wells would be deep, all of those came back well below the drinking water standard. Some of the shallow irrigation wells came back close to that seventy parts per trillion.
When you're referencing a deep well, are you talking a couple hundred feet, or?
Yes, the deeper wells, right. The shallow wells in twenty-to-forty-foot depth range, they're the ones that came back, in some cases, close to that seventy parts per trillion standard.
I appreciate it. And then, you know, just, I guess, to bounce one final thought with Commissioner Smith here, you know, I'm happy to defer to you on this, it's your district, obviously, your constituents are going to be best served by your decision rather than mine. I don't live there, I don't work there. If you want to continue with it, excellent, if you want to continue and you want to have some additional testing done, I'll support that. If you want to pause it to have some testing done, I'll support that. It's really in your court, whatever you're comfortable with.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I've been following this pretty closely, very, very closely, actually, for a long time now, and Ms. Sullivan has been in my office, and I've spoken to her several times. I'm the one that got this whole ball rolling way back when, when I called the Florida Department of Environmental Protection and the U.S. Environmental Protection, and I contacted Senators Nelson at the time, and then later Senator Scott and Rubio, and spoke to Congressman Posey personally to raise the awareness of what's going on with this area that Sandra's concerned with. And I think we're seeing the fruits of that come now, because we have had some positive things happen in the last week or two. I've spoken to Virginia numerous times about these subjects, particularly in the water, and I'm convinced that she and her staff have done a very adequate job in determining that there is no real threat to anyone regarding the water in the Indian River Lagoon or the surface waters. So, no, I wouldn't be, if something else came up to raise alarm, I would be more than happy to support that, along with you, everybody else on this commission, but I think we're good as we go forward. I think we have an awful lot of people watching out for our best interest, including Virginia Barker.
Thank you, sir.
Well, while we're on it, I just, I want to be sure that we're doing everything, because if you're correct, and all those samples are coming back fine, I would rather be certain with two-hundred percent certainty that everything is fine, and if it's taking more samples, you know, that may not be a bad idea. That's just my opinion. I mean, I don't know how you guys feel about it, I just know that, you know, there's something going on, and we have to at least do what we have the power to do on our part. We couldn't really get them to declare the land, that had to be a state issue, that wasn't up to us, but as far as these, what we're capable of doing on our end, I want to say we've tried everything, or we've done everything, and I know you have put a significant amount of time on that, I wouldn't dare question that, but I just want to be sure again that...
No, I'm with you. It's really a federal issue, it's not a state issue, it's not a county issue.
Right.
We're limited to whatever we can encourage our...
But I think it was Congressman Posey's office ultimately, that probably really got people to act, and that's why...
He definitely deserves his share of accolades, that's for certain. I don't think you can test too much, I agree with you, but at what point do you just continue testing when you keep coming up with the same answers? But I think that the real source of question is regarding what the federal government's going to do now, and they're going to go in there and start looking at her backyard and other backyards, and testing the soils, and see if they can get to the bottom of the mystery as to why we have three ALS cases in a population of a hundred, when two out of a hundred thousand is...
And, but while the federal people may be responsible, these are still our residents, so I want to make sure that we're pushing as well.
Well, that's key, because people in Washington don't know we exist unless we, you know, the squeaky wheel.
Right.
Could you permit me to say one thing in this room?
Just briefly, only because we're discussing it.
Really briefly. I met, in nineteen-eighty-nine, the base started draining their disposal sites, according to an EPA letter, to the Indian, to the Banana River. In the years that followed, there was an ALS cluster, six cases in one year on eight canals. We are concerned that when you start disturbing that muck, and it starts, the contaminants start going back into the water column from the spoil area, that we're going to have another ALS cluster. I am really afraid about this.
Thank you, Sandra.
I think it sounds like if there's anything that comes up, you know, you'll certainly have the support of the board, it sounds like you've got two already. If there's any additional testing you want to do, and I would extend that same suggestion to Virginia, if there's something that you need more resources in order to test in the meanwhile, it sounds like you'll probably get them without too much trouble, or any trouble at all, really.
And scientifically, we can be certain that, you know, what she's claiming, and I understand, you know, Sandra's like a resident, I mean, you're not a scientist, but she's done enough research on this, I'm sure, and the little I know about disturbing something like that. Before any of that occurs, I think we need to be certain that we're not going to be causing a greater problem. And if we can't say with certainty, then we probably need to have an expert come in and tell us with certainty, or with at least some semblance of near certainty, that it's a safe thing to do.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Virginia, how long ago did we test this muck?
That's a good question, it's, time's a big blur, it's probably been close to a year? Two thousand and fifteen. There was metals testing, the standard testing that's done for muck dredging projects was back in two thousand and fifteen, but the PFAS sampling was much more recent, after we learned about the contamination at the base, and so I believe that PFAS testing was about a year ago. So, since we don't know what might, you know, what's, I think the concern is ALS, and so, you know, ideally you would want to look at what contamination has been linked to high rates of ALS in, you know, other places, and look specifically for that, which...
Ms. Virginia, okay, do you think, how long does it take to run a test sample?
It depends on what you're testing for.
Okay.
Some of these things are emerging contaminants, so the recrimetals, that's standard, that's fairly, you know, a few weeks, but some of the other contaminants are more detailed and require a different laboratory technique that takes, you know, like six weeks. We would have to get a consultant onboard. We could use a continuing consultant contract to bring on a consultant to collect those samples for us and send them to the lab. It would be a few months before we could get data back.
Do you think this would be a good process, maybe to run one more sample, or do you think it's just going to come back the same? What's your, because you don't have an agenda on any of it, so what's your opinion?
I would like to reach back out to the Air Force staff, you know, with the latest FUDS finding, and go through the available data and maps and history, and compare that to the sampling that we've already done, and see if there are any gaps in the analysis that we have already done, and if there are such gaps, then we would want to collect that data.
Okay, so my guess right now is that's what you're going to do as soon as you leave here today, right?
We've already started that dialogue with the Air Force Base staff, so...
Okay, so then you'll let us know if there's something?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Tavaia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Parker, have we started to mobilize on this dredging project? I was driving here today, and I saw Gator dredging, you know, the big truck. I know they've done some work out there, my question, you know, what the cost would be, you know, should we extend the testing six weeks, or twelve weeks, or however long? Can you give us an idea of what the cost of that would be?
I do not know off the top of my head what the cost of that would be. They, right now, they have, they've completed construction of the turning lane, they are nearly complete with development of the dredge material management area. They were hoping to mobilize the first of October, mobilize the dredge, the first of October. Right now, there, there's an extra step in the permitting that the contractor has to do, in addition to all the permitting that the county has already done. We received a request for more information from the state on that. We've resubmitted either the end of last week, or yesterday, the answers to those questions, so we're hopeful to have that approval from the state, you know, any day now, to be able to mobilize the dredge, but the dredge, we don't have that right this moment, and so the dredge hasn't mobilized yet. Delaying to collect more data would most likely delay the start of construction. One of the things that was important to the contractor is that they get out there with the dredge to start their process in this timeframe, October, November timeframe, before the dredging is shut down for manatee protection. They have a brief window in order to get things started, and figure out their process, and come up with, you know, how to move forward most efficiently. So, this delay would probably take up that window, and they would not have the ability to do that, you know, first bit of work, to sort of fine-tune their future work. I don't know how the contract provisions would affect cost. We can certainly look into that, and let me look at Matt, you don't, do you have any better answers than... Believe you all know, Matt Culver.
So, there's presently, the contract allows for several sessions of mobilization and demobilization, so those costs are, I want to say approximately four to five hundred thousand dollars each session, so they've already partially mobilized to this point, ready for that final mobilization for the dredging. So if we were to stop now, they would get a partial demob, excuse me, to, so that cost change would be related to that mobilization and demobilization cost in their contract, if that makes sense.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Parker, is there an intent to test the waters as the dredging takes place?
Yes. We've been working on a plan for how frequently to test both the affluent and the effluent, so that plan is still under development, and, you know, depending on the board's wishes, we could, you know, test more than we would otherwise do.
But it is something that is already in the works, and so we will be getting a snapshot from time to time of the muck you're bringing up and the waters around it.
Right. So what's typical with a project like this is that you select a sampling of locations to test ahead of time, and so we looked at different depths of muck, you know, deeper muck, shallower muck, heads of canals, ends of canals, and, you know, did a sample to capture those different variables. We have not sampled every single canal, and that's one of the concerns that we've heard from the community. And so, one of the things that we had talked about doing was that as the dredge moves from, you know, one canal to the next canal, that we would sample the affluent and effluent from that, so that we know, you know, that particular canal is no different than the others.
Thank you.
You have anything?
I think it's just good that we've at least had the ability to discuss this a little bit, and I think as Virginia mentioned, the last item essentially, these aren't mutually exclusive, I don't think we have to delay in order to test, so if there's a middle ground to be had, maybe it's continue with the dredging, but test as the dredging is going along to see if anything warrants pausing the dredging. And I would say if there's anything of concern, you know, you certainly can bring it back to us, or bring it back... to us, or bring it back to Mr. Avante, and if there's any question whatsoever, you know, my stance would be one to err on the side of caution and pause things while we take a look at whatever it is that's concerning.
Okay, moving on to item H1.
Thank you. Okay, this is the first of two public hearings for the board's 180-day moratorium on new application, land application of biosolids within Brevard County. In addition to what's in your agenda, after this agenda was submitted, we took this item to the local planning agency. They supported the board's moratorium unanimously. The second public hearing, second and final public hearing, we'll plan to bring to you on October 8th.
Have two cards. Douglas Spar.
Douglas Spar, 825 Clifton Cove, Cork, Coco. I have concerns about what this proposed moratorium will accomplish. I've attached some excerpts from the annual biosolids application summaries for Deseret Ranch, Deer Park Ranch, and Titusville Osprey Plant. All three of these will be grandfathered in under the proposed moratorium. Last year, Deseret spread over 26,000 dry tons on 6,549 acres, but they have 52,619 acres permitted. They got a lot of maneuvering room. And these are spread over Brevard, Osceola, and Orange Counties. And last year, Deer Park spread over 7,484 tons on 3,269 acres, but they have over 5,000, they have 5,502 acres in Brevard and in Osceola approved for spreading. Titusville is a smaller player with a site in MEMS and another in Port St. John's. I've included report sheets that show the sources of the biosolids that Deseret and Deer Park spread. It's incredible, the stuff from Miramar, Davie, Plantation, Miami, and all those places are being trucked here to spread in our backyard. Now, I'd like you to look at the last sheet. This is very important. It is an email from FDEP Biosolids Coordinator Maurice Barker. He's the guy that issues the permits. Mr. Parker said there are no, I say no pending permit spread application for Brevard. He went on to say that the FDEP database does not show any permit applications for Brevard over the past couple of years, other than the recently withdrawn Pochee Ranch application. This suggests to me that the proposed moratorium on new permits is mostly symbolic, with low probability of reducing biosolids application in Brevard. A stronger message would be to impose a total moratorium. The county should be looking to partner with the state on advanced technology demonstration facility at one of our landfills. After all, the state is responsible for this stuff being shipped here in the first place. Republican Germany, in response to water pollution of biosolids, has enacted a national ordinance that bans land spreading of biosolids. They have a law that requires by year 2023, that all sewage facilities serving over 50,000 residents have a plan for how they are going to remove the phosphorus and other nutrients from the sludge. And by 2029, they actually are supposed to have the facilities up and running. Now, Germany would not have passed such an ordinance if they did not think there was technology out there to do that. So if the country of Germany can do it, so should Florida and Brevard County. Thank you.
Daniel Willimer?
Williman.
Williman?
Good morning, Commissioners. I intended to come up here and support...
Name and...
Oh, excuse me. Daniel Williman, Satellite Beach. You guys recognize me by now. The beard's gone though. Yeah, cleaned up a little bit. Need a haircut, that's next. I initially came up here, I wanted to support this, but if, what this gentleman is saying is true, if the existing biosolids suppliers are going to be grandfathered in under this, what's the point? My concern is that with all that stuff going down on the lands next to where we get our drinking water from, the sludge contains not just nutrients, and nutrients are a concern, but it contains unregulated contaminants like PFAS as well, and we're putting that right next to where the drinking water comes from. And carbon can't filter short-chain PFAS as efficiently as it can filter long-chain PFAS. So we may end up having to adapt our treatment techniques later on down the line. This may end up costing Melbourne Water a lot of money. That's important, that's a good, that's a big concern. I wonder if you guys are familiar with the study done by ORCA when they looked at the Blue Cypress? Basically, they found that the Blue Cypress Lake has both sucralose and acetaminophen, and there's no other, no other legacy source of pollution there. There's pretty much just farmland around the Blue Cypress. It's all coming from biosolids or cows. And cows, they basically said cows don't take aspirin. You can find the article on floridatrend.com, but it pretty much outlines that the biosolids spread down by the Blue Cypress are leaching into the Blue Cypress. So it makes sense that up here where we spread biosolids, it leaches into the northern parts of the St. John's, and the St. John's flows north, like I said last time I was up here. It doesn't flow south. It's one of the only rivers in the world that flows north. So it's carrying all that stuff. Everything it gets from Blue Cypress, the Sawgrass Lakes, it's carrying it all up towards, like, Washington and depositing it there where we get our drinking water from. Very, very big concern. I think we need to look at not letting any biosolids be spread here in Brevard. I think we don't need to be grandfathering anything, and we need a total moratorium on this. We need to stop it. We need to take a look at what damage has been done, and figure out where to go from there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lober?
A few thoughts on this. First off, and this applies to both speakers really, and then I have some questions for staff as well. As far as the folks that are applying biosolids right now, Ms. Parker, is it your understanding that the only entity in Brevard County that's presently using biosolids is Kemfer?
Deer Park is the only ranch currently applying biosolids. The city of Titusville is also applying biosolids on land that they own produced at their wastewater treatment plant.
Okay, but they're not bringing any in, they're just using those that are produced in their own?
Correct.
All right. And then, in terms of our ability to regulate what a municipality does with their biosolids and their borders, if we were to pass something, they could turn right around and their council could overrule that, could they not, Ms. Bentley?
Correct.
So that's something beyond our purview or our ability to regulate anyway. I would encourage them certainly to look at whether that's in the best interest of their constituents, and if they feel it is, obviously they can continue as they're doing, and if they don't feel that it is, obviously they can take a step in this direction. But I think, you know, taking a look at the fact that we now have at least our foot in the door with respect to this, if we move forward, there's a tremendous value in that. The other thing is, with respect to Mr. Kemfer, who was here when this last came up, I think it is potentially good for us, for the first time ever, to be able to access his property with his consent, to go ahead and do the testing to determine exactly what it is that's coming from the biosolids. The problem, and I agree that sucralose and acetaminophen, they're probably not the only NSAIDs or artificial sweeteners that remain after the sewage process. I don't think any of our plants, I know none in District 2 municipal or county, filter out either artificial sweeteners or NSAIDs to any substantial degree. It's not that we specifically treat for them, or even that the municipalities do that. But they also come from sewage leaks that end up getting released. They also come from septic that ends up leaching out. So there are a lot of different sources, which is why I see there being a value in at least cooperating in the short term to determine whether or not there is a greater proportion, or really a meaningful proportion, of those items coming from the biosolids. So if Mr. Kemfer wouldn't have been as cooperative with the county, I could see being a little bit more restrictive, but given that he's consented to allowing us onto his property, certainly with reasonable notice, I would take it. I don't see there being the urgency that there otherwise might be, because this gives us the opportunity really to do the proper science and get the evidence, so that if it does turn out that this is as problematic as I suspect it may well be, we can use the fact that we put our foot in the door and expand this as necessary. Or in the alternative, if it turns out that it's really not as much of a concern as I anticipate it may well be, then we're not going to unreasonably restrict someone's business on account of something that we just feel is icky, but we don't have the science to support it, having been given every opportunity. So I have no problem expanding this if the evidence supports it down the road. In fact, I'd like to do that if the evidence supports it down the road. But I think that we, at least at present juncture, I think we need to continue on the track of getting our foot in the door. It's not going to harm the city of Melbourne in terms of costing their water supply anything, because the alternative to not passing this, at least insofar as today is concerned, is doing nothing. I don't know that the board, regardless of my personal feelings or my feelings as one of five commissioners, I don't know that I have the support of the board to enact a total ban regardless. And frankly, with the fact that we're still gathering the information from Mr. Kemfer, which should take, I would imagine, several months, we're not talking years, we're talking months, I think we'll be in a better position with more support to act on it if that's warranted in just a few months.
Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Madam Chair. If this would have been 60 years ago, this probably wouldn't be an issue, but how we've changed our lifestyle over the years, Commissioner Zanardi could probably greatly educate us on the antibiotic problem we have. And there was just an article in the paper about dolphins now having the antibiotic-resistant bacteria, almost every one of them contains one of them, and not to mention the hormones right now that we're having an epidemic with our children. Children are maturing faster than they've ever before, and I think it's got a lot to do with the hormones that are in our plant-based food, our animal-based food. So we've got a lot of work to do. I think, you know, we need to get there. I think this is something that we need to address sooner rather than later, of changing the way that we process, I'm just going to call it waste. But we need to do a better job, and I think this is a good educational item to bring up to start making these changes. What I like about the moratorium, and again, I want to get to where we quit doing this altogether, what I like about this is the other counties are starting to ban this, and if you don't have some type of moratorium, all of the areas that need to do this are going to try to pour into the areas that don't have moratoriums. So this is a great thing that we're doing to protect our county. But I totally agree. I would like to see in the next year or two to totally not be doing biosolids this way, because it is getting into the ground, it's getting into the groundwater, and it's starting to affect our food. And I think we have a lot of work to do as society, because I want to leave a great planet for our grandchildren. So I'm going to make a motion to go ahead and approve this moratorium, Madam Chair.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Commissioner Pritchett, a second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right, item H2.
Item H2 is a petition to vacate a 15-foot-wide public drainage easement that runs through Parcels 265 and 273 along Squire's Drive in the unincorporated area of Titusville. The petitioner owns both parcels and has provided a new drainage easement further away from the existing residence. Notices were sent out to county agencies and public utility companies, and we've received no objections.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I make a motion to approve, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H3?
Item H3 is a petition to vacate part of a public utility and drainage easement along the side lot lines of Lot 46, Block B, in the Wingate Estates Phase 2 subdivision in the Rockledge area. This will remove an existing residence as an encroachment into said easement, and notices were sent out, and we've received no objections.
Commissioner, what's your pleasure? Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H4?
Item H4 is a petition to vacate part of the public utility and drainage easement along the side lot line of Lot 9 in the Moorings Unit Number 2 subdivision in Satellite Beach. This will remove an existing pool and screened enclosure as an encroachment, and we've received no objections.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Item H5 is a petition to vacate part of the unimproved Third Avenue public right-of-way within the San Sebastian Platte Number 1 subdivision in Miko. The petitioner owns Lot 1 adjacent to the 70-foot-wide right-of-way. The Third Avenue right-of-way was previously vacated to the north. Notices were sent out, we've received no objections. FPL requested an easement over their existing power line, and the adjacent owners have already executed those easements. Staff has no concerns with this request.
Commissioner, what's your pleasure?
Motion approved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item H6?
This is a temporary use acknowledgement for de-watering activities at a proposed parcel that we would like to purchase, which is also on the agenda as a later item J1, to provide some details about what is planned for the site. If the temporary use is approved, Matt Culver is here.
So, good morning, Commissioners, again. So this is a request for the board to authorize the execution of a temporary use acknowledgement to allow for the Save Our Indian River Lagoon program to use a 7.43 acres of a 13.5-acre vacant parcel currently considered for acquisition. The site will be used for de-watering activities for the Sykes Creek Muck Removal Project, and the request includes authorization that the TUA be issued concurrent with the notice to proceed for the contractor for the Phase 2, for Phase 2 of the Sykes Creek Muck dredging project, and the term would extend for four years. The $24 million Sykes Creek Muck Removal Project is fully permitted and funded through a grant from the DEP, and also the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Trust Fund. The project, Phases 1 and 2, remove a total of 640,000 cubic yards of muck in the southern portion of Sykes Creek, covering an area of about 187 acres. The Phase 1 is estimated, which is current, which is expected to go out to bid in the next couple of weeks, is estimated to remove about 60,000 cubic yards of this material, and that material will be taken to an island near Kiwanis Island for de-watering treatment and storage. The Phase 2, for Phase 2, staff proposes the muck be dredged and transported via pipeline to the proposed 7.43-acre de-watering site. Construction of this project is anticipated to commence in 2021 and lasts for three to four years. So, some additional items on this is sediment testing. So sediment testing has been completed at 30 locations within the Sykes Creek project area. Sediments were tested for the suite of recrue metals throughout this site. Of those tests, the only noted exceedances were for sediment arsenic levels with levels above residential standards occurring at various locations. No commercial exceedances were encountered. It should be noted that elevated arsenic levels are typical of these projects, and it's typically, and it's a typically occurring substance in native Florida sediments, particularly tied to upland sands. So buffering. During the, so it should be noted that we presently don't own this site, so full engineering design has not yet been completed for this site. But during the design and permitting process, significant effort will be made to avoid impacts to wetlands and minimize disturbance to neighbors and area residents. The site design will maintain a natural buffer of existing vegetation between Sykes Creek and the work area. A vegetated berm and buffer are presently proposed for installation along the northern residential perimeter of the temporary dredge material management work area as a visual and sound buffer. Additional buffering options are being examined. So this area is connected directly to Banana River Drive, near what's called the S-Curve for the local residents in that area. The site design will incorporate safety precautions along North Banana River Drive at the access location, including engineering design evaluations for appropriate... location, including engineering design evaluations for appropriate signage and required flagmen during active trucking operations. A gravel apron will be installed to knock down dirt from truck tires and prevent sediment from being transported onto the roadway in that area. Let's give it to Commissioner. A couple more items, nutrient removal and treatment. Water separated from the muck will be act, so as with other projects, will be treating, not just removing the muck, but also the nutrients from the interstitial water associated at the site. Water separated from the muck will be actively treated to minimize nitrogen and phosphorus returned to Sykes Creek and the surrounding waterways. The dredge effluent will be required to meet the county standards of 3,000 parts per billion for total nitrogen, which is related to advanced wastewater treatment standards for wastewater, and 75 parts per billion for total phosphorus. Upon project closeout, after de-watering and treatment on the site, dredge materials will be located to a permanent beneficial use or disposal location, and this temporary de-watering site will be redesigned as a stormwater or surface water treatment area for long-term and be managed by the county stormwater department. Final site design consists primarily of a large open area with a 15-foot buffer of plants maintained around the perimeter, and this project is estimated, it's estimated that the use of the temporary use of this site for this project will save the county approximately $2 million on the Sykes Creek muck removal project and provide future stormwater treatment for the area. That's a brief summary of what we're trying to do with the site.
Commissioner Lober?
I have some thoughts on this. Obviously, this is in my district. This is one of those where I may end up supporting it even though I'm not in love with it, and I want to talk about why specifically. As Matt mentioned, this is going to save us quite literally millions over the next least expensive alternative. With respect to the buffering that Matt mentioned, one of the things I don't believe that he did mention is that, at least insofar as a temporary use is concerned, and staff, please correct me if I'm wrong, whoever wants to jump in, my understanding is that there is no buffering requirement whatsoever, but the buffering we're doing is to make this more palatable and to facilitate this not being an imposition any more than need be on the neighbors that live to the north. For those that aren't familiar with this property, there's a Walmart immediately to the south of it. The portion that's immediately south of this property is basically the back of the Walmart. So frankly, I'm not too concerned about the southern neighbors, because they don't have a reason to be concerned, though the northern neighbors do. Obviously, you have residences to the north of it. It's concerning to me. This is one of those where I understand folks don't want it in their backyard. I definitely take that into account, but the question is, if we don't put it there, what's the next alternative? And the next alternative is a multiple the expense. We're doing more than we're obligated to do, and quite frankly, I don't have a problem diverting more resources to buffer it to whatever extent is possible. I've had conversations from the get-go, and I've said I wouldn't support this without buffering, and in fact, I've said I would adamantly oppose it without buffering and substantial buffering at that. The buffering is part of the plan, at least at this point, and I will not support it. If that comes out of the plan at some point in time, it'll come back up before the commission if the buffering is removed. In terms of the cost of this, aside from the cost savings, another item at the front end that was a concern to me was the property owner was originally, I don't want to say "a little bit greedy" with what they were seeking to get from this property, but we had two separate estimates that were provided to the county, and I was unwilling under any circumstance to go over the average of those two estimates. Now, the fact that we're saving literally millions by doing this was not lost on the property owner, and they figured, well, we've got the county in a bad position here where they're going to have to pay us substantially more than the property might otherwise be valued at. However, my position with respect to that, and I've communicated it to the owner's rep from the very beginning, was I'll walk and spend more money, because I don't want to create a precedent where you're going to basically put the county over a barrel and say, "Deal with it, you're going to pay more than the value." However, they did get reasonable. We're in a position where, at this point, I think the means that we have to mitigate both the expense and the impact on the neighbors to the north, we have them accounted for. As far as environmental concerns or concerns from a health standpoint, I've talked with Virginia about this, I've actually talked with Department of Health, which used to be in my building in Merritt Island up until just a few weeks ago when they moved back here to Viera to consolidate. Essentially, what I've been told by the folks that are smarter than I am and have way more degrees than I do and way more letters after their name than I do that apply to things like this, is essentially that the permitting process going through DEP, if there are other agencies, whether it be Army Corps or otherwise, there are safeguards in place that apply to projects of this scope that provide for ensuring that we're not doing something that's going to poison people that are nearby. If there were a question as to that beyond some concern that can't really be articulated, just we don't like it and we don't really know, I would have a different position. But with DOH telling me they don't have concerns about it, with Natural Resources, whose expertise I have to rely on based upon the fact that they're our staff, they're well-educated, and they do this thing frequently, it's part of the job, I've got to rely on that expertise. I don't have the concerns I otherwise might. And one of the things to focus on, and it's not terribly clear in the title of this particular agenda item, is the muck treatment is a small portion of what this site is going to be used for. And when I say it's a small portion, what I mean is, the reason that they're using this for de-watering first and foremost is, when you demuck or you dredge, you pull up something, it is absolutely beyond saturated. It's got to go somewhere to dry out. You can't truck wet material in the same way that you truck dry material. It's much more expensive. You'll have it coming through any gaps in the back of a dump truck or a semi. This is a site not where we're making a muck landfill, so to speak, but we're allowing it to de-water, basically to dehydrate, to dry out, so that we can then take it away from there and bring it to a site that's nowhere near these properties, so it's not going to be a long-term solution in terms of where it's going to reside. Now, the long-term use of this particular site, as was alluded to, is one that deals with water treatment. You know, one of the things that's important to, I think, everyone in that area, certainly in my district, is the state of the lagoon. Obviously, the long-term, multi-decade use that's planned for this is one of water treatment. As far as the demucking, I'm not going to tell you that in three years or thereabouts, when the first round of demucking is done and over with, that we're never going to use it for demucking again. Obviously, the location of the site has a value insofar as its proximity to the canals and the areas that need to be demucked. And with that said, over a period of time, I would love for muck never to recur or end up collecting again, but we're probably going to have muck forming, maybe not in the same volume as we have now, I hope not. I think the steps that we're taking make that at least something that's less likely to be a problem in the same level. But the fact is, when it reforms years and years down the road, whether it's 10 or 15 years from now, whatever that number may be, we can then turn around, use the site again for another three years to de-water the muck, and then basically go through the cycle where only periodically is it going to be used for this purpose. I'll say, because this applies to me the same way that it did with the South Patrick Shores concerns with respect to any kind of safety concerns, if there's anything that's identified, whether it's by some separate governmental agency or entity, or internally in Brevard County, I don't have a problem pausing anything if there's a legitimate health or safety concern. In fact, if there's a question, I'd rather err on the side of caution, but at this point, the only things I've heard are from folks that, quite frankly, have my level of knowledge with respect to this or less, which is to say, I don't have a degree in organic chemistry or inorganic chemistry. You know, I don't do this in terms of this being my bread and butter day in and day out. I've got to rely on the folks who are in the positions of public trust, namely the folks in Department of Health in particular, who tell me they don't have concerns. So with that, I'll be quiet, let folks have their public comment, and then maybe jump in at the end.
Okay, I have several cards. Olin Perez, and after Olin, Denise Stacy. Can you say your name and...
My name is Olga, I'm Perez, and I live in 1475 Island Drive in Merritt Island.
Can you pull the mic down so we can hear you? I'm sorry, huh?
Okay. My name is Olga, I'm Perez, and I live in 1475 Island Drive in Merritt Island. And my concern is what's going to happen to us when that construction go on. My house is, you know, right there behind Phillips Drive. You know, Phillips, then it's one more street, and then it's 1475 Island. And my concern is that, what's going to happen to us driving by, and, you know. And also, after the project is done, what the plant is going to do, is it going to be odor, or it smell bad in that area, or the property value is going to go down, or things like that concern me.
After Olga, Denise Stacy.
Madam Chair.
Well, if we pause for every card, we're going to be in trouble.
Just real briefly, because I anticipate this may come up again.
Okay.
Could staff just talk us to the question of odor real briefly?
Briefly.
Sure, no, sorry, which particular...
As far as whether there's going to be an odor that's detectable to folks that are 100 feet away or 200 feet away?
Sure, so the chances for odor are very low, so I would go to a site in Cocoa Beach, where we've had two projects done in residential areas that are actively dredging muck with similar sites directly behind residences, and we never had a complaint about the smell. You can't smell the muck right now, and it's sitting in the bottom of the river, so when it goes into another containment area, there's no odor also, unless you're standing right next to it, there's generally no issues with odor.
Thank you.
Okay, Denise. And after Denise, Deborah Combs.
My name is Denise Stacy. I live at 1625 Phillips Drive, Merritt Island. And according to this little diagram, which we all probably have, that we all got, this is where I live, right here. So you're telling me that the people to the north should have more concern than the people to the south? That's just ludicrous, all right? Also, my concern is, I have quite a few, not only the smell, I have the, when it rains now, I have backyard floodage. You've got to be kidding me, you're going to tell me that we don't have floodage isn't going to come from this? Of course there is, I already do now. I've taken pictures of just the rains that we've had in these last recent months. I deal with that every year. It's just going to get worse. Second, the wildlife situation that is back there. I understand you have permits, so on and so forth, relocation of turtles, how about that? We just had an outbreak of baby turtles that were just born, of the tortoises that are back there, which are the gopher tortoises. We also have horned owls, there's also indigo snakes, things like this that need to be either relocated. 50 years for a turtle to die after it's been buried underground. That's suffering for that turtle for 50 years while it dies underground. These are things I think we should take into consideration. And if you don't think they're there, I do have proof that the babies did just get hatched not more than 12 weeks ago. Also, I have a concern of the amount of noise that will be brought to the area. I've lived there 35 years, and I don't understand why now we have to all of a sudden uproot most of the families in that area with the amount of noise that is going to be brought in through. Also, considering it's supposedly about 85% saltwater in the muck to be pumped through the pipes of 8.5 miles of north to the proposed land, there's got to be a better way. I understand that I'm not as smart as you are, but I'm telling you, I don't like what's about to happen to my area, and I think it should be really considered more about how the people there who have lived there for such a long period of time feel about having such a construction just to save you the money that I pay taxes too. So, you know, I want to save everybody money, but I don't want to do it at the expense of just the people that deserve to be there and who have been there for years.
And after Deborah, we have Hackenberg Soya. Did I say that properly?
My name is Deborah Combs. I live at 1555 Phillips Drive.
I apologize for mispronouncing your name.
Oh, can you hear me now? I'm taller than the last... Okay, Deborah Combs. I am adamantly opposed to the county's plan to develop and use the area adjacent to my home and all homes on Phillips Drive for de-watering activities. Your letter states that the county is seeking approval. Approval comes from residents, does it not, who would be detrimentally affected by such a project? And I can confidently say 99% of residents in my neighborhood object to this plan. Consider our health issues. Whatever the experts say, there's got to be chemicals in this silt, airborne bacteria, germs, dust, pollen irritating our lungs and eyes, and the noise would be harmful from the big equipment to residents working second shifts, and ill people, elderly or and ill people, who wouldn't be able to get proper rest. Debris ruining the swing pools back there, exterior home surfaces, outdoor furniture, children's play toys, all the maintenance costs would rise to keep our areas clean, and this is serious, sir. The interiors, we wouldn't be able to open our windows for fresh air. It would smell, and it would have dust and particles. And the biggest loss to our home investment is market value. We all work hard to have homes, we all work hard to pass things on to our families. Use of Phillips Drive is residential only, not for huge load trucks. Diversion of load trucks at S-turn would cause major traffic jams and accidents. This area is already dangerous. Within this S-turn curve, there are five ingress egress areas. Adjacent condominium has two more, plus a school bus stop. And close by, across the street from the bus stop, is the Merritt Island Co-op Apartments, which, by the way, that's their only entrance and exit. This brings the total to eight. Banana River Drive is small, and traffic flow is heavy. Already, it comes to a standstill for quite a distance for two schools, which we accept as children. You'd be putting lives at risk, making emergency vehicles traverse such a traffic jam as this plan would cause. Other health and safety issues would be risked, because Hobbs Pharmacy and Brevard Medical deliver medical equipment and medicine to local residents in that area. And please consider the flora and fauna environment of this pristine wooded area. It protects our homes from flooding and major windstorms, and I thoroughly enjoy and respect the land behind my home. I see all these red-tailed hawks, ospreys, great blue herons, and two different species of owls, and gopher turtles, blue jays, you name it, it's there. I hear their songs, I hear the wind. We haven't destroyed enough. I urge you, if you're going to buy this area, don't destroy it, protect it.
Thank you. I have, I don't know if they have the names switched, Hackenberg Soya? Is it Soya first, Sonia first? Sorry.
Hello. So the last lady had some...
Name and address, or name and...
Sonia Hackenberg, 180 Bounty Street. So my home is just along the fence line. I'm with the Merritt Island Co-op community. As the last person already mentioned, a lot of the facts that hopefully you can consider, if I would say, they would dump that sludge in your backyard, right, a few feet from your home, and you would like to have a barbecue, I don't think that would go too well, right? The smell to put up with for four years is horrendous. So we truly oppose that the county would use this piece of land, and hopefully you could maybe send that toxic stuff out to the landfill. We realize it would be more expensive, but you would save us any health concerns that might develop because of it. Or maybe use it to create another island somewhere, or come up with some better solution to use this site in such a close proximity to a residential area. to a residential area is probably not the best idea, so, thank you.
Thank you. Peter, Peter Clements? And Jim Stone is after Peter?
Pete Clements, I'm at fifteen twenty-five Phyllis, which is on the south side of Phyllis Drive, so my backyard will be right up against this. I didn't prepare anything, I did a little research. And of course, my main objection will be with the odor, which we all know is going to exist, as well as the noise. I don't have any suggestion, I understand that you would save some money there, and if you pay more than what the property appraiser has stated for that piece of property, that would be a disgrace considering the opposition that exists, which was two hundred and sixty thousand is what's in the books on that. Also, in your thirteen acres, I think there's what, a good four acres that's underwater? So really, you're using basically the entire portion of the parcel there, from that perspective. And that's just getting that out, just so that everyone understands what's there. But my main objection would be with the odor, as well as the noise. And I do understand that you originally led a contract for this work, which would pump up to Christopher Philly, and that contract was canceled. So you've moved down to our area. And I guess I'm done.
Thank you. And after Jim Stone Anthony Siaka?
Thank you. I speak fluent, so I made coffee. Can't possibly get it in in three minutes. For over five decades, I've lived at fourteen ten...
Can you say your name?
Jim Stone.
There you go.
I've lived at fourteen ten Island Drive, and I'm gonna compliment the county here, which I seldom do other than Road and Bridge. I used to wait until a Seig Street trout used to float down my canal, let it settle for a while before I'd eat the shrimp, trout, and crabs out of that, which I wouldn't even think about today. But you all fix that system. When the pump fails, the pump sewage to your processing plant, it now gets fixed right away, folks are good. The other thing I wanted to talk about for you is, it appears the dredge work will include canals from five twenty to five twenty-eight. Now, I didn't get a copy of this letter, so I just read one of my neighbors one day, and I'm quoting from what I read. "If this is the case, then muck will be pumped from north to south and eventually trucked from south to north for final disposition. The dredged muck will be pumped into the lagoon area, open water, between Phyllis Drive and State Road five twenty, where it will be dewatered by dumping wet muck into open water." Now, I'm an engineer, graduated from Northrop Institute in the fifties, and the law of physics then were pretty rigid. You couldn't violate them, or you never got into space. And I think the law of physics applies today with dumping muck material into a lagoon, and you're gonna dry it out. There's something in the physics of that I don't understand. Now, the spoil island north of Kiwanis Island was the dewatering area years ago when these canals were last cleaned. Nobody I know of complained about using that spoil island because it's not in anybody's backyard. The dewatered material will be transferred from this lagoon that I mentioned by Phyllis Drive to land between the backyards of Phyllis Drive and the logistics operation behind Walmart. Now, here's the real thing that irritates me. I talked with you, Commissioner, and I appreciate you listening, about traffic. How on East Merritt Island, when I moved here in the fifties, it was a small residential area, and the thing that controlled that pretty much was the old humpback bridge, where if you got to the middle of the road first, you got to go over the bridge. So that kept traffic down. Then, when the John Hurdle Bridge went in, folks going to the port, Cape Canaveral Air Force Station, and NASA started using our residential streets, and now we got cruise lines coming in. I went to the last port commissioners meeting and told them, hey, you start bringing in six thousand passengers on each ship and over two thousand, four thousand employees, they all use Banana River Drive in one way or another. And that's not fair to those of us that have spent our lives there. And the final thing, I don't have time to go over all this, is, do you have money in the budget to repair Banana River Drive when this is all done? Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony Censor? Censor? Anthony? I'm sure I butchered your last name too. After Anthony Allen?
Anthony Siaka.
Siaka, see, that's what I thought I read, but then you look and, oh, that could be an R right there, see? That's what I said the first time.
When you called Jim, I thought you were calling me, that's why I said, I'm not gonna help you with the last name. Anyway, my name is Anthony Siaka, I live at sixteen thirty Phyllis Drive. It's directly across the street from the proposed access to the property. That corner is treacherous. The trash truck has to literally back up after he attempts to make the turn, so he can come in and make the turn. Take that into consideration, excuse me, take that into consideration with fire department traffic coming down to answer a call, while you have twenty dump trucks possibly queuing to turn into an area that was turned down by the county commission years ago when there was a proposal to put a condo on that property. That corner was turned down by the commission because it was too dangerous to have access to the property. So, that hasn't changed. If anything, it's worse now. With the dump trucks trying to get in there, school buses, local traffic, eight-eight-eight traffic coming from the port, it's gonna be crazy. It's just too, too much for that small access there, okay? I have to agree with everybody else as far as the stench is concerned, I have to disagree with gentleman there who says that Cocoa Beach did not have a stench, okay? Because there was articles on East Merritt Island news, okay, of people who lived out there at that time, and did complain about the stench, maybe not to the commission, but they openly complained about it in the letter because of this what's going on now with this proposal, okay? It's just, it's just not conducive to the area for all of the residents, not only on Phyllis Drive, but the whole area, all of East Merritt Island is in jeopardy putting this facility there. The trucks coming in and out of there, there's gonna be an enormous amount of air pollution from the diesel, noise pollution from the, and then the equipment, excuse me, then the equipment noise of the removal of the fill that they're putting there. So, a good site, if it's available, is over by Ulumay. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Alan Bergerstock?
Alan Bergerstock, I live on Phyllis Drive. Also, I'd like to start off with, with just reading a quick portion of the four Rs for environmental dredging published by the Army Corps of Engineers. The four Rs refer to resuspension, release, residual, and risk. This was a workshop put on, again, by the Army Corps of Engineers, where they brought in fifty experts from government, private sector, and academia as part of this workshop. Of the fifty-page report, there is one section, one small paragraph referring to these sediment cleanup sites. "It is evident from the paucity of existing long-term monitoring data for sediment cleanup sites that more emphasis must be given to this particular aspect of cleanup projects. The most effective monitoring should be structured to test specific hypotheses and risk reduction that are developed from the results of predictive modeling. In a sense, remediation projects are large-scale experiments." I personally don't volunteer to be a part of this experiment. I don't volunteer my children to be a part of this experiment. It's evident by the previous agenda items that it's an experiment, and nobody in this room and none of the experts know what effect on our health this is gonna have. Commissioner Lober, I appreciate you standing forward and saying that there needs to be a buffer zone between the north, the north end. However, I think that is a de facto acknowledgement that this is too close to residential areas. There are other alternatives, there are cheaper alternatives, there are geo-tubes that can be utilized to pump this directly back into the lagoon, create islands, but still contain the solids, thirty to forty percent less cost effective. So, I urge you, and I plead with you, please do not expose my children, the neighborhood's children, the neighborhood at its whole to this experiment. Lastly, with my last few seconds here, I would like to share the comments of my nine-year-old son, who's a budding naturalist himself, and is studying nothing but the effects of, you know, what human beings have done to the Indian River Lagoon. He couldn't be here because he's in fourth grade today. But he said, "This is a bad idea." We are taking out mangroves, we are taking out natural runoff, stormwater runoff treatment by reducing the mangroves, by affecting all of the animals within that area, and we don't know what we're doing to human beings." Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. David, David Christian? And after David Chuck Norris?
Hello, my name...
Chuck Norris is a cool name, you gotta say that.
That looks pretty good.
Yeah, but you're David.
My name is David Christian, I live at fourteen twenty-five Phyllis Drive. I am the last dock on the water to the west side of this property you're talking about. Now, a lot of people have touched on many things that I agree with, I've been a contractor all my life, Mr. Lober. You cannot put a buffer between that property and the houses. We can hear Walmart trucks, we can hear people yelling at Walmart, we can hear cars driving across five twenty. You know, there's also a lot of animals, I can show you video after video of manatees that come to my dock, the dolphins that are back there. There's nothing better than to sit on my dock at the end of a day, in my shorts with a beer in my hand, throwing my fishing pole out in the water. For this gentleman to say that there's not gonna be no stench, that's not true, that's not true. You can drive down towards Kelly Park and the stench is horrible. We don't want that stench by our house. There is not enough land there to do this, especially, they're gonna damage the water. All that demucking, where's that water coming to? It's coming right into our water by our docks. And during all these fish kills, behind Kiwanis Island was one of the areas that we did not have any fish kills. Our water was still pristine back there, we had no fish die-off back there. We had the manatees and dolphins in our backyard all the time to prevent being out where the fish kills were. It's an area that needs to be protected. A lot of the homeowners that are all along that property, there is absolutely no buffer that you're gonna be able to put there, not hear them tractors coming in and out. You're gonna hear the heavy equipment all day long that they're there, there is no buffer that can stop that. If we can hear the backup alarms from the trucks at Walmart backing into the doors, how can you stop a tractor that's gonna be there all day long? A lot of people have touched on a lot of things, so I'm trying to hit the other things. You know, there's lots of areas that they can dump this muck. It doesn't have to be that close to a residential street. This neighborhood is still the type of neighborhood where our kids know each other, they ride their bicycles up and down the street because it's a dead-end cul-de-sac. You know, our kids play in this area, we don't want that heavy equipment coming in and out of there. There really hasn't been a good explanation of exactly how they're gonna come in and out. They're saying North Mariner River Drive, but I know that there's other options that they're considering, because I see them out there with the GPS markers and marking all the stakes in the ground. So they're already taking initiative, like this is absolutely something they're gonna do. So hopefully, everybody coming here today, Mr. Lober, will make you rethink that this is our neighborhood, we don't want it there, and, you know, like the Constitution says, "life, liberty, and pursuit of happiness." And you're taking our happiness if you let this happen.
Okay Chuck Norris? If that's really your name? I'm just kidding. You must get tired of the jokes, I'm sure. What's that?
I hear them all the time.
I bet.
Hi, I'm Chuck Norris, I live in Melbourne, twenty-three-two-eight Post Road, is one of my residences, and I own the, next to Walmart, the twenty acres right next to Walmart, it's a lagoon, and I would be considered, you know, I'd like to, you know, if you guys wanna consider moving your site, it'd be more towards the five twenty. You know, I'm just offering a solution to your, where do you wanna go to dump all this? Even, you know, the twenty acres lagoon that I own, I own it with my son, and it's, you could put, I don't know this muck, I don't know what the advantages are, but I'm willing to look at possibilities of, you know, what I can offer with this lagoon. So it's twenty acres right next to the site, and it goes right to the five twenty, and it runs along the five twenty, right next to Walmart. So, I'm just offering a solution. If you wanna look at an alternative to this other little lot, commercial lot, that you're looking at now, and that's all.
Thank you. Commissioner Lober?
Quick question, what do you want for it?
I own it with my son.
Dollar value though, what do you want for it?
I'd have to talk to my son.
Okay, thanks.
Okay? But it is available for consideration, okay?
Thank you, sir. Alright, that's all the cards I have.
Can I jump on again?
You sure can.
Thank you. Alright, I wanna touch on a few things here, and then I may surprise folks with where I'm going on this. But I do wanna address some of the concerns nonetheless, 'cause I think it's important to do that. So I'm just gonna pick them up chronologically here. So essentially, we've heard from the first speaker that it's ludicrous that people to the north should have more concerns than people to the south. I still stand by that, as I mentioned when I was introducing this item or speaking after it was first introduced. The property to the south is a Walmart. I'm not concerned about the loading area of a Walmart. Walmart apparently isn't concerned, 'cause they've never reached out. The folks that actually live there and have their families there to the north are the ones that I'm concerned about, not the loading area for Walmart on the other side. I don't know in terms of the fifty years for a turtle to die underground, that's unfortunate if that's the case, I just, I don't have any knowledge about that.
Hey, shh, please don't call out from the audio.
As far as uprooting families in that area, my goal isn't to uproot anyone, that's part of the reason that I'm proposing if we do anything that we do the buffering, and as substantial buffering as we can fit in the space, not bare minimum, which come to find out is actually zero. As far as the statement, there've gotta be chemicals, the water itself is technically a chemical, dihydrogen monoxide. Everything is a chemical, we're all made up of chemicals. The question is, are there dangerous chemicals in there? And conjecture and people being concerned about it isn't equivalent to there being some real evidence that it is, or even really might be, a problem. Debris ruining pools, have we ever heard of any pools being ruined by debris? Debris-ruining pools, have we ever heard of any pools being ruined by debris? Ever? Anywhere in the county? Even a suggestion from someone near or next to a demucking site?
Not associated with the projects that I've seen happen.
And then, as far as the smell, you know, we've heard a couple contrary things. Obviously, if someone's from Cocoa Beach writing the East Merritt Islands HOA to put something in a newspaper, I find that kind of odd. I'm not saying it didn't happen, but, I mean, to rack your brain, has there been anything along those lines that's been suggested or alleged? Not by people who were concerned in advance of it being done, but after it's actually been put in place in a prior location?
No. It's just when you're standing right next to it, you may get an odor, but beyond that, once you step away, the odors disappear.
And that makes sense. As far as it being a pristine wooded area, I agree, it's a pristine wooded area. The lot adjacent to my house is pristine, but I'm not in a position where I can say to the folks that own that, "You can't sell it and develop something there. It's not my right." I'd love for it to remain undeveloped forever. It's not going to, this lot, regardless of what the county does or does not do, will not remain a pristine wooded area. I can just tell you that. It's not environmentally endangered land. It's not something that's protected. Regardless of whether we take some action, no action, or every action, it will be developed. It's a fact of life, and it's unfortunate, but, you know, I can't control any more than anyone else can control whether individuals with property that's zoned in a particular way develop it in accordance with that zoning. As far as toxic stuff, do we have any indication that there's toxic stuff in the muck that is slated to be dewatered where this to go through?
Our testing has not indicated anything.
And then, health concerns was another item that was brought up. Do we have any evidence to suggest that there is a health concern? Thank you.
None.
And, you know, I always heard that, you know, there are other places we can dump the muck, and I agree, there are many other places we can dump the muck, but the question is at what cost? I'd love to dump it elsewhere. I'd love to mail it to China or India, quite frankly, and let them deal with it, but everything has a cost associated with it, and that's really a big factor in terms of this having been proposed. It was proposed based upon it being the least expensive, least onerous burden for the taxpayers to shoulder. That was a multiple, or I should say a fraction, of the next least expensive alternative. It's not that we could spend 20% more and put this out of sight and out of mind. We're talking millions more, a multiple of the cost. As far as the individual that said it would be a disgrace to pay more than appraised value for the property, let me know if you want me to buy your property at appraised value. The property appraiser's value is, from what I've seen, never, ever the actual value of the property. There's a reason that we had two appraisals and that we're looking at the average of those two appraisals. The property appraiser's value, you know, if you really stand by that, let me know, and I'd be interested in purchasing your house. I do have some concerns, and I do want to ask staff. One of the items that was mentioned by Mr. Stone, who was kind enough to bring his concerns in advance to me at my office, as far as dewatering within the lagoon, I was a little confused by that. Are we dewatering anything by introducing muck into a body of water? Because my understanding, and maybe I just missed something in the portion that you presented here today, is that we're putting it in dry land or over-dry land in order to allow it to evaporate and basically dewater naturally. Am I misunderstanding that?
That's correct. That's, I wasn't clear on the statement made by the gentleman either. Most likely, so the intent here would be use the upland property, upland portion of this property also, and avoid any wetland impacts, so it wouldn't be damaging the mangroves around the perimeter or anything like that. We would use the upland piece so we can dry the material. Most likely, a use would include geo-tubes, as were mentioned here, also would probably be an appropriate staging methodology for this material at that site to keep things dry as possible.
And then, another concern that I think was certainly a valid concern, or at least a potentially valid concern, Mr. Siaka, and I don't want to mispronounce it, am I doing well? All right, let me, if I may, real quick. With respect to this concern on the quarter, what is the plan currently with respect to ingress and egress there? Are you still talking about going through Banana River? What are the options at this point, and what are the concerns that staff has?
Sure. Of the parcel presently, the purchase of the parcel includes a small triangular lot on the corner of North Banana River Drive, right at the curve there. So, it'll be a temporary construction entrance during, while the material management portion of the, while that's going on. So, while it's not engineered yet, we anticipate, obviously, there'll be signage as you approach the corner from both sides, and our engineer has suggested that we may need a flagman on that site while trucks are actively going in and out, so that would mean there would be somebody out there slowing traffic in both directions as required to get heavy equipment in and out. I've had some calls, people have indicated that, a lot of people take that corner at high speed as it is. It's not supposed to be high speed. So, the flagman, obviously, will help reduce, you know, slow the traffic as they approach that corner.
And let me ask you, just because I wasn't on the commission prior to this past November, and maybe I should actually direct this either to Mr. Denningall or Mr. Abate, as far as there having been some proposed condo in that area that was turned down by the board due to it being too dangerous to access, do you know anything about that? And if so, can you give me just even a real Cliff Notes refresher in terms of what the concerns were and whether you think they'll apply with what's been proposed at this point?
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with that. The, there's, over the years, there's been a couple of, two, maybe three different proposals for development on the property. It's a zone for multifamily, and the proposals included many units in there. I don't, can't recall how many, but it's a great number. And the volume of traffic associated with that was all concentrated in the curve there and would be an unregulated, uncontrolled sort of volume of traffic, just like any other driveway would be. That's what was being proposed. What's being proposed here is a controlled ingress and egress, low volume. It is trucks, but it's an irregular and infrequent use other than the times when we're actively utilizing the site. And when it converts to a stormwater system, it's going to have maybe one or two vehicles a month going in there other than mowing. And so, it's really very much a different condition when it comes to traffic. It's far more favorable than probably anything else could be proposed for the development of that property.
I appreciate that. And moving on here, in Virginia, you may remember this, I'd actually gone to the East Merritt Island HOA meeting when they last met, and the same gentleman, Alan Bargestock, I believe it was, had mentioned to me his concern about essentially the dewatering project constituting a large-scale experiment, I believe was the terminology. I had asked if he would forward that to me, and if you have, it never came through. I definitely wanted to read that in advance because that is something that is concerning to me to hear, but anything taken in isolation, I can't make heads or tails of it. It's concerning, but without reading the whole thing and understanding what context was or wasn't there, it's tough for me to make much out of that. But have you gotten anything with respect to that since we spoke?
No, I'm not familiar with that report. The majority of environmental dredging that is done is to remediate contamination. And so, my guess would be that that's the basis of that report, and, you know, we don't have heavy industry here contaminating our sediments. We just have organics breaking down and releasing nutrients that are feeding algal blooms.
That makes sense.
So, it's a different kind of environmental dredging.
And I do believe he mentioned even here today that he was talking about remediation sites in particular. As far as the buffering, or my insistence on buffering being a de facto acknowledgement that it's too close, I have a couple comments. One, this is, I guess, the perfect example of no good deed goes unpunished. But the other is, it's acknowledgement that if you don't have it, I think it would be an unsightly facility to have in place, but not necessarily an unsafe facility by any means. Just because I don't want to look at a satellite dish perhaps, doesn't mean that the satellite dish is going to poison me or threaten the safety of my family. So, I stand by the, you know, the fact that buffering is nice. I think it'll keep the property values up by not having to look at anything. And quite frankly, when this is being used for stormwater management in the long run, if that's how we go, I think it's probably going to be much nicer than having a multi-story condo complex. So, I do want to emphasize, it's not being put in place to shield anyone from anything unsafe, but rather just to keep the property values up. I don't believe there are any cheaper alternatives. I know staff has researched it. We've heard from folks, there are cheaper alternatives, but we've never heard from anyone, "Well, what are those cheaper alternatives?" I've not heard any suggestion to the contrary, with the exception of the gentleman who owns the property, the 20-acre parcel, which I am interested in learning a little bit about. But before I get to that, as far as the gentleman, Mr. Christian, who came up talking about hearing people yelling at Walmart and trucks backing up at the loading dock in Walmart and traffic on 520, if you can hear that, I'm not going to tell you'll never hear anything from this. I can't tell you that. But I also can't tell you if it's developed for some other purpose, that you wouldn't hear something from that as well. If you can truly hear through and past the Walmart all the way out to 520, I can tell you, you're going to hear something, just because that's, you know, it's surprising to me that you can hear the trucks backing up at that point. But, you know, the question is, is it putting out an unreasonable amount of noise? Is it something that we're buffering in order to reduce? I can tell you, you know, when I spoke about this on the front end, the concern that was raised to me previously was the odor concern. No one had really mentioned, or at least focused heavily on the traffic concern so much, with the exception of that one curve, depending on the ingress and egress. As far as the concern about it damaging the water, I think we've heard pretty well from staff that we're actually doing the opposite, that this is something which clearly benefits the lagoon. Not only are we taking out the muck from the body of water, which has the impact of reducing the nutrient loading and making it more navigable, but the water that's going to be released is released with no more than three parts per million of nitrogen in it, which is, actually, it meets the advanced wastewater treatment standards if we were to use this for reclaimed water, if it were the equivalent of reclaimed water, something that we don't have to meet, but some of the facilities, not all of them do. I will say, though, and I did say I was perhaps going to surprise folks with the way I was going to go with this at the end, I don't want to put something in your backyard that you don't want to have there. I don't. I get that. I'm not going to promise you down the road I'm going to go one way or the other on this because it really depends on what alternatives are available. And if someone has an alternative, let me know. I have no problem looking into it or having staff look into it if it's reasonable. I will probably, well, I'm not probably, I'm going to go ahead and move that we continue this out in one regular meeting to give staff the opportunity to get in touch with Mr. Norris, who identified his property as being adjacent to Walmart. If that's something where we're...
Commissioners, if you would, I have identified, staff has brought to me that 20-acre piece of property. It is adjacent to Walmart, and it is submerged lands in probably excess of 90% of it. It's basically the Sykes Creek river bottom is what it is.
So, is there any ability to use that within a reasonable cost, let's say within a million dollars of what we're proposing for the same purposes?
I don't believe we'd be able to even, even, there'd be almost zero chance to be able to get a permit to be able to use that property.
I appreciate that. Changes things. Well, I'm not going to go ahead and move in that case. Yeah, I mean, this is one where, you know, I don't know that this isn't the best possible option, you know, and I would just suggest that if anyone else on the commission has a feeling good or bad, that they vote according to, you know, what they think is appropriate and in the county's best interest. You know, I'm going to, you know, I'm not going to hold anything against anyone if they support or oppose this.
Commissioner?
Yes.
I hate to interrupt you. I really hate to interrupt you.
No, it's fine, please.
I just would point out that item J1, which is the contract for the purchase, does have a deadline date on it that is today.
Please don't speak out. Please don't speak out.
Well, I tell you, you win a lot more with honey than vinegar. That's not helping your cause. That said, you know, I think, you know, perhaps if there's a motion made on this, we just need to call the question, but I, you know, I'm kind of torn on this one. I don't like it, but I don't know that we have much better alternative.
Commissioner Pritchett?
You know, whenever we've had this discussion, it's not comfortable having something called muck put anywhere close to your home, but I kind of had a little concern about the traffic till you discussed exactly what it was we were looking at. We've had this project in the men's area, and there hasn't been any smell. We haven't had any complaints with it, and it actually, it doesn't, it's, it kind of flew also, you know, by the time we got done with the project and got it all laid out. So, I don't know. I would think as we're doing this, if there's something that comes up that causes heartburn to the residents, they should probably get ahold of us and maybe we can figure out some adjustments, but I just got a feeling this isn't going to be as much of an impact, even though it's got that feeling towards it. And, you know, we're going to only, we're going to be using this for four years, so, and then we'll probably put it back on the market.
No, we would convert it to stormwater treatment.
Okay, let's, um, don't talk about it, please.
Please don't speak out.
So, I, you know, every time we're having this discussion, we go through these discussions, but again, in our district, when we dealt with that, it really didn't end up being any kind of an issue. So, just want to throw that thought out.
Appreciate it.
Commissioner Smith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I grew up in an area on the Delaware River in New Jersey that they're still dredging and dumping muck, and it's a non-issue. And I know that you people don't like to hear it. The unknown is always fearful, but I don't think this is going to be nearly the problem that you think it's going to be. And I would like to make a motion to pass this issue.
I have a motion by Commissioner Smith.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tobia. Is there any further discussion from other commissioners?
I'll just reiterate, you know, you need to vote the way that you think is appropriate. Don't worry about how I'm voting on this one. I'm not looking to hold anything against anyone.
Well, I won't be supporting it because I don't, I don't think that this is the right place. I think that this is residential and multifamily use. I mean, our past kind of speaks for what should and shouldn't be there, and I think devaluing people's property for four years is an unfair thing to do, so I won't be supporting it. So, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes 3-2.
Say aye.
Okay, please, guys. Before we move on to the next item, because I'm not sure how long this meeting is going to last, we're going to take five, 10 minutes at the most. Okay, item I2, Mr. Abate? Or whoever's going to speak on this item?
Good morning, Commissioners. Item I2 is, at the last meeting, you instructed us to sit down with the Bovard Cultural Alliance to work on a contract, so we've brought back a contract that we're recommending for your approval. Some of the highlights of the contract, it would have funding of $193,000 for the Bovard Cultural Alliance in fiscal year 1920. That is about the equivalent of their staffing minus the salary for the executive director. It would also move their offices to the Merritt Island Service Complex, and in the agreement is contingent and submittal of separation of employment documentations of the existing executive director. The $193,000 funds will come from the Tourism Development Tax Reserves. There'll be $500,000 available this year for cultural support grants. The contract is renewable by the county managers based on board-approved budget allocations each year, and we also request, under the request of action, that the board recognizes and finds that these, this is a proper appointment of Tourism Development Tax Funds is defined by Florida Statute 125.0104.
Let me add that this is a one-year renewable contract.
Okay, we're going to listen to comments first. I have five cards. Mr. Ridenhour?
Excuse me.
And then, after Jim Ridenhour, Laura Lee Thompson?
Madam Commissioner and Commissioners, good morning.
Jim Ridenhour, 4250 Cary Wood Drive, over in Florida, 32934.
I've been called Ridenhour, Ridenhour, so it's okay. I answered anything. I'm here as the chairman of the BCA Board of Directors. We had good, honest, direct negotiations. I want to thank Liz Lamb and Peter, well, the county manager Frank Abonte, and Chrissy from the county attorney's office. I thought we, I thought we talked direct, we talked straight, and we got to the issues, and we made a good decision. I'm here in support of the $193,000. That's for the BCA staff. I think that's very important. However, there is a however, and that is, this will be the first time that we've ever executed $500,000 in grants. We did not allow for that. In the past, the county has allowed $40,000 to the BCA to execute $130,000 in grants, so there's nothing in there for this time. Plus, also, as mentioned by Jim, there's no allowance in there for an executive director, so when we decide we have to go do that, we're going to have to find the money to do that. Anyway, that $500,000 support grant is huge. We don't know what it's going to cost us in a round of time. I will have the BCA staff keep very close records all year in regards to the amount of money, amount of time spent executing that program, so when we come back for next year, we'll have a good handle. year, we'll have a good handle on that cost. In sum, I think $193,000 is an excellent start for FY 1920 for this contract, and I fully support the proposal as presented in today's meeting. Questions?
If we have questions, we'll call you back up.
Thank you for your support. Appreciate it.
After Laura Lee, Tim Daretani?
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irwin Avenue, MIMS. I've been on the TDC for 20 years, and I can tell you that the BCA, it has a habit of like surfacing every several years, and these giant conflagrations occur. So we're, we're at a point now where we can move forward, and maybe the BCA won't take up so much of the TDC's time, because our, the TDC's job is marketing the county. It shouldn't be trying to run cultural events and stuff like that. So I hope that you guys will support this. A lot of work went into it. It accomplishes everything everybody wants, I think. It's gotten funding cultural grants out of the county's general fund and going totally into the tourism, which is where it should be. We have one of the best cultural arts agencies in the entire state, so we'll be able to keep them going. We got a half a million dollars worth of grants. We've never had that much money for cultural grants before. The TDC, the Office of Tourism, doesn't have staff to handle a half a million dollars worth of small grants, so this is like the perfect situation for everything, so I hope you guys will approve this contract, and we can move forward and let the TDC market the county, and let the BCA work with the cultural stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay?
I'm here for informational purposes as the chairman of the TDC, and if you have questions later on, and I would be happy to-
All right, well, Tim Daretani spoke from the, from the audience, and said if he's has question, if we have questions, he's available. Liz Lamb? And for the record, Tim Daretani is the chair of the TDC.
Liz Lamb, Merritt Island, TDC Cultural Committee, and also, I just wanted to let you know that I'm an artist. I have a degree in art. I have attended Florida Arts Council Grant Review meetings all over the state for the past eight years. My family moved here in 1970, and I'm very familiar with the arts and the arts in this county. I would have preferred a maximum of $150,000 for the BCA administrative budget, but because I was told at the meeting with the county manager that the funding for the BCA at $193,000 for administration would not reduce the $500,000 for the cultural support program, I agreed to the $190,000 as a compromise because of the following changes and additions to the contract. The BCA agrees to select a board of directors comprised of a minimum of 50% of individuals who are executive directors, or their appointees, or active Bivard County arts groups, or cultural entities. The BCA shall provide a minimum of two workshops for Bivard cultural groups to encourage application for state, federal, and foundation grants, and the cultural support program grant application process will now be much easier for the arts groups. This is a one-year contract. It's contingent upon the resignation of the BCA executive director, and the TDC and the county staff will appoint voting representatives to the search committee. I would like to see the BCA find new leadership that is more transparent, more welcoming of volunteers like myself, and more resourceful. Hopefully, this revised contract with reduced funding for administration and increased funding for the arts grants is a big, for events, by the way, is a big step in that direction. So I'd also like to say that these are grants for the arts groups for events, and I am, I do support the $193,000 amount that we agreed on. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Montes?
Good morning, Karen Montes, Indian Harbor Beach. I don't actually have a comment other than supporting the passing of this agreement. However, I was advised in order to be available to answer any questions as the chair-elect. I needed to submit a card, so that's why I did. So if there's any questions for me as chair-elect, I'll be back there with Jim.
Thank you. Thank you.
No, to the president.
Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Smith. Commissioner Pritchett?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I'm going to follow along and pass this also. I just want to thank everybody for working together on this, and Mr. Bate, thank you for all of your work on getting something that works with all, all the, all the people make them get to vote. Commissioner Lober, you have a line that you use every once in a while, I love. Well, it's about coming together and making some type of ability to move forward where everybody's not happy, but what is that phrase? Because I'm a butcher.
Essentially, if everyone, you know, leaves and they're not miserable, it's not necessary to have folks smiling when they walk out of a deal in order to have a fair deal, you know?
That's good, but you usually have some-
I have it phrased better. You kind of put me on the spot there.
But I think that's, that's one of the things I've learned from you since you've been on here, is working through those processes, and everybody did that. Mr. Daretani, thank you for that, and Mr. Ridenhour, thank you, and all those parties involved. I'm really appreciative of it, and I really think we have a lot of good moving forward, because where you come together in agreement, we have great paths of some, some great cultural alliance. I'm going to mess this up terribly, some great arts into our community, so thank you for that, and I just wanted to give you all kudos for that, and I really appreciate it.
Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I want to thank Mr. Krannis for spearheading this. I also want to thank Senator Daretani. I know that we'd not always seen eye to eye, but on certainly this issue, the most important one that you faced as my appointee, you acted honorably and in a stellar manner. I'd like to point out a couple benefits that weren't necessarily mentioned on this. More money will be going to the arts. My understanding is we will be pulling money out of general funds, so we will, the $80,000 that were in general funds will not, as you see, Mr. Bate completely turning his head very quickly, that we will see $80,000 less. And this frees up much-needed space that a commissioner who will rename, name, remain nameless, mentioned that we needed previously. Now, the $193,000, I'm not very comfortable with. I think Ms. Lamb was much closer to that amount at $150,000, and in all honesty, I'm looking at this, I'm ready to vote no on it, understanding that this will probably still pass 4 to 1, but I have a great deal of faith in our county manager, who will look, I'm sure, to make sure that we're getting a return on the $193,000 before this contract comes up to us next year. So again, I wanted to thank everyone, and I'm going to be voting yes with some reservations that I'm sure will be solved by the end of next year.
Yeah, I think, I think the comment, Mr. Lober, says something like, if both parties are a little unhappy, then you're probably right where you need to be.
That sounds better than what I said today.
Or maybe, or maybe it was, if only one party's happy, that's not where you want to be, or something like that. But I think so, I think that, that, you know, this was a great compromise, because you both aren't 100% happy, and I think that the idea was, and I think I've always battled with, because of the issues and the problems with the BCA in the past, regardless of whose fault it was, is that the TDC could not manage all those grants, and that was, that was why the BCA had its staff, that was why the TDC had that contract with BCA, and it was a good relationship and concept, and I think Mr. Daretani, and I used to talk about it a lot, I said, I like what the BCA represents. I just don't like the strife, and I don't like the conflict. So I'm glad that they're still going to be in charge of the, of the grants, but I'm also more excited to hear that your board is actually going to have artists and executive directors of, of people that, you know, it's kind of like, I won't refer to any companies directly, but having a company that doesn't have any of its members as part of the board making decisions about things they know nothing about, so it doesn't make a whole lot of logic, a whole lot of sense. And realistically, if you had somebody managing those grants and those programs and, you know, so a lot of the outreach and programs that they do, and the arts in public places, and in the workshops, we would probably have to have staff within the TDC to do that. So that's how I can, I can be okay with the salaries, you know, given the amount of work that they do. So I just pray everything goes well moving forward, and I wish everybody the best of luck. So with that, I'll support this as well. All right, I see no lights on, so I'll call the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item I3?
Commissioners, item I3 is unfinished business relating to the City of Palm Bay Bayfront Community Redevelopment Agency Interlocal Agreement. As you recall, the board took action on August 6th. Moratorium that was going to last until, would last until October 8th. During that period, we had discussions with the City of Palm Bay. They did send something back to me during mid to late August about a proposed agreement that they thought would be appropriate. They, when we got the hurricane that Dorian came, and we were off for days that week, they, they actually had a city council meeting that night where they passed a proposed interlocal agreement. That agreement shows in this particular agenda request as option number two. That agreement would continue the CRA through its original date of 2024, and would also continue the incentive agreement they have with North Shore Development through that timeframe. Consistent with the direction that staff received from the board at August 6th, the county attorney's office prepared an interlocal agreement that is different than the one that was approved by Palm Bay. That shows as option number one. That option would sunset the CRA, consistent with the ending of the debt payments that they have in 2022, which is something the board had discussed and had approved of on August 6th. So you have option number one, you have option number two, which is the Palm Bay agreement. Then you have several resolutions that were prepared by the county attorney's office. In those resolutions, the first of those, which is option number three, is consistent with the resolution, would really be extending the resolution, virtually mirrors the resolution that was passed by the board on August 6th, talking about no new debt and no, no new action in a moratorium by the, by the CRA. But you then have option four, which is a little bit more stringent than option number three. And then we have option number five, which would be a resolution that would basically take away the authority of the CRA to take actions, and also sunset the CRA basically, because they won't have any authority to do anything beyond 2022. The final resolution that was prepared by the county attorney's office would be the board substituting itself as the CRA. So we've provided you the full breadth of what potential options are, and I would turn it over to Eden, if she wants to add anything on the resolutions, but pretty much that's what we've submitted for the board's consideration this morning. I do believe Palm Bay is also here. They did have issues, and they brought to our attention their concern relative to their agreement with North Shore, because they feel that they have an obligation. There is language within those agreements that say basically, for certain reasons, if under stat, under the corresponding statute, if the CRA no longer is making payments into the fund, the TIF payments, that there would not be an obligation for the city or the county through the TIF dollars to pay into there, but they do have concerns about that, about their drafter's intent, et cetera. We do, I believe, the city and the county and our legal staffs have a difference of opinion there, but I think it is important, in fairness to how they're looking at it, that we share with you that those opinions are out there, and they are different opinions on that issue.
Commissioner Tobia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to thank staff who turned this around so quickly, to provide us with the long litany of options. I also want to thank the board. On the August 6th meeting, I think we were extremely clear when we asked, or better yet, with a 5-0 vote indicated to Palm Bay, that we were ready for this CRA to close. I want to specifically mention Chair Znardi and Commissioner Lober, who were quite a bit more forceful than I even was with dealing with this situation. But I'm also very disheartened to see that this basically bounced back to us with great disregard with the 5-0 vote that we sent over. As Mr. Bate said, this CRA would be extended, not extended, but it would not be closed any sooner than what we had mentioned before, so it was 2024 as opposed to 2022. The city manager was out in the audience, and whether or not that message was conveyed to the board, it certainly was not followed. At this point, I think our options are pretty limited, if we were actually to follow through with the intent that we asked on August 6th. That, of course, that Mr. Lober had mentioned, would be the nuclear option. However, I think it would be wise, before we exercised that option, that we took a brief pause for two weeks. So since this CRA is in my district, and I certainly would like to understand the attorney opinion from the city, because the opinion that I've been briefed on from the county's perspective as to the contract is pretty cut and dry. So I don't know that there would be any harm in waiting till the next meeting, so I'd like to make a motion that we table this item till the October 8th county commission meeting, Madam Chair.
I have a motion by Commissioner Tobia, second by Commissioner Lober. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item J2?
Item J2 is the request for the, no, it's not. What, how did J1?
Oh.
Yeah, now, the, the printout doesn't match the Novus-
Yes.
-for numbering.
The Novus and the printout are two, like, it's, we've been playing around, okay.
Item J1.
J1.
Okay. Item J1 is the request for board approval of the contract for sale and purchase and addendum for the Nandivata parcel. The contract's contingent upon the board's approval of the temporary use acknowledgement that was discussed in the previous agenda item H6. Fair market value was established by obtaining, obtaining two appraisals and having them reviewed by an independent appraiser. The average of the two appraisals was $1,032,000. We've identified the funds, the funding for this, approximately 75% is coming from the Save Our Lagoon Trust Fund, and then approximately 25% from the Florida Inland Navigation District Grant. I do need to just point out a couple of minor typos on the agenda report. We, the second to the last paragraph, we said the Benson and Company report was dated October 16, 2019. It's 2018, and the amount for that, the report was 710,000, not 750. It is correct on the, the property fact sheet that's attached to the, the agenda item, and the average works out. The math that we did is correct. So we are requesting board approval to proceed with the closing on that contract.
Commissioner Lober?
Just briefly, I want to reiterate what I said on the earlier item that was related to this. You need to vote how you think the, how you think that the county is best served. I'm going to vote the way I vote, but truly, I'm not, not keeping tab on this one by any means, so please do what you think is right.
Commissioner, what's your pleasure? Commissioner, what's your pleasure? Someone, anyone?
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Tobias for approval, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes 3-2. Item J two. I didn't have any cards on J one, just so you know. I have J two.
Yep.
One.
J two?
J two's next, is right now. Yeah, I have a card on J two. I didn't have any cards on J one, is what I was saying. That's okay. Go ahead.
J two is regarding repairing the engineered dune in the South Beaches following Hurricane Dorian. It's requested that the board authorize use of an existing contract with Southern Disaster Recovery to repair the damages in the South Beaches. We've negotiated a change in price to their existing contract. They were the low bid contractor the last time we had to repair hurricane damage. We've negotiated a price that's equal to that low bid amount plus the CPNI between then and now. Also ask that the chair be able to execute a change order for that new work at that negotiated price. The county manager or designee be able to execute work in excess of 100,000 associated with all the other tasks that have to take place for, for dune work and then authorize staff to continue to work with FEMA and the state to seek as much cost share funding as is available and any necessary budget requests.
All right, Ms. Carl Kaiserman?
Thanks to all that natural.
Can you say, I'm so sorry.
I'm sorry. Carl Kaiserman, 4515 South Highway A1A, Melbourne Beach.
Thank you.
Thanks to all natural, all that natural resources and the commission does for one of Brevard County's most valuable assets, our beautiful beaches. And thank you for taking time for citizen input. I previously pursued my career as a New York City architect for 40 years and returning with my wife to, retiring with my wife to Melbourne Beach in 2005. I built our eco-friendly home on the ocean and settled in to pursue my dream, spending my golden years as a certified beach bum. I have also stayed involved as a community advocate. Since 2006, when I attended my first commissioner's hearing on dune restoration, I have attempted to understand this difficult barrier island issue. The standard repair procedure for those of us in the middle reach and southern reach portions of the barrier island is for the county to allocate many millions of dollars to bring new sand from the mainland by truck and distribute at beachside. Time is almost, this is almost entirely used to bolster the repeatedly eroded dunes. Other options have been suggested and mostly dismissed. I support short-term dune repairs, but I also suggest exploring other cheaper and/or more permanent methodologies. The one I prefer most is the use of bulldozers as soon as possible after a major erosion event to push the eroded sand back up at low tide to the dune wall. After all, the sand has not yet washed away. It has just been eroded onto the beach and formed sandbars close to the shore, sand that will return to the beach on the next high tides. This restoration method is used with great success on the New Jersey Shore, but has been rejected in Florida because state and county agencies consider this beach scraping a forbidden procedure. It is, however, a function of the co, cost, a fraction of the cost of mining and trucking in new sand. Such a pilot project should be attempted. Reef balls should also be explored as they have been found to be an inexpensive, long-term solution to beach erosion in many similar venues. There's also a question about the agenda report that you have. It says beach renourishment in the mid-reach and south reach is expected between December 2019 and April 2020. Work planned prior to Hurricane Dorian, is that scope of work being incorporated into this contract?
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lober?
I guess, you know, I had a couple of questions, but I'll actually bounce one of them that was brought up during the, the public comment portion of this to staff. What, what's the story as far as the, the use of bulldozers? Is there a concern as far as impacting wildlife or why, why don't we do that?
We have a sand starve system and so part of the reason that we experience as much erosion as we do is because there's inadequate sand on the beach and in the sandbars underwater as well. And so using bulldozers is sort of, you know, rearranging the sand that we have, which is already inadequate, whereas bringing sand in is, is trying, is offsetting some of that historical starvation that, that our beaches have, have experienced. We know that our dunes, the way we've been building them have, have functioned very well, right? We have not had loss of structures since we engineered this program. Even, even if you were to rearrange the sand that is there, you would have to wait for a recovery bar to make its way for sand, underwater sandbars during periods of low wave activity to move closer and closer to shore and onto shore. And then that's what you scrape up into the dune. Otherwise, you're just digging a hole in the beach, which is going to increase the pace of erosion in the dune. If you leave that bar welding occurring as, you know, Mother Nature does, then it provides protection to the dune that we're constructing. There are also turtle nesting concerns as, as you brought up with wildlife.
That, that does it for me. Move to approve.
Second.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item J three.
And while staff is getting ready, I'll just save your time. Move to approve.
I second the motion.
Okay, I have a motion and a second and I have a couple of cards. Olivia Eskidel? And after Olivia, Laura Lee Thompson?
Olivia Eskendell, Satellite Beach. I'm a conservation specialist at Brevard Zoo and I had the pleasure of coordinating the Shuck and Share Project, which was one of the grants for the last cycle. So I want to thank you guys for supporting them over the past year and then I would hope that you would support these grants as well. The Beach Committee and the TDC did a great job going over all those applications and they chose some really awesome projects that wouldn't be able to get funded through SORAL because they maybe don't have a nitrogen or phosphorus removal component, but they do great things for the lagoon. So I wanted to thank you guys and if you have any more questions, I can answer those about the zoos projects.
Thank you so much. Questions? Okay.
Not for her, I'll speak to another.
Laura Lee Thompson?
Laura Lee Thompson, 3550 Irland Avenue, Memes, Florida. I'm the chair of the Beach Committee and, and so we're the ones that looked at all the grants and I'm really happy, you know, we had $350,000 worth of grants that we funded last year. This year, the total is 628,270. So we've moved up in the world, but it, you know, even better is it's $2,551,000 worth of projects and we are going to have $1,923,000 worth of match. So the program is maturing just the same, you know, way that we had thought it would. And as Olivia said, these are projects that wouldn't qualify for SORAL funding, so we're actually adding to lagoon restoration. So I hope you approve them and I'll be here for questions if you have any. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioner Lober?
Just briefly, when this came up to the TDC, I'm not on the subcommittee that voted on this, but I, I do represent the board on the TDC. One of the concerns that I had was specifically about an item mentioned identifying the, the number of pounds of nitrogen and phosphorus removed as a result of each of these grants. That is something that I've suggested that in subsequent years, if I'm still on the TDC board, that I, I will expect them to, to demonstrate, not to say that if it doesn't remove a particular number that it's going to be excluded, but that would be a, a good metric to have in the breakdown of any, any spreadsheet that's provided. That said, I think that, you know, there was considerable effort put into this by the subcommittee. I think we all have to respect our appointees' decisions with respect to that unless we have better alternatives. I could nitpick this, but I think in aggregate, this is a good move overall. So I, I would encourage my, my fellow commissioners to support it this year and then obviously next year with the additional information to take it in accordance with that.
Commissioner Tobias? All right. Any further discussion? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay.
Nay.
Nay. Motion passes 3-2. All right.
J four.
Item J four. Just going through this new agenda.
So Commissioners, item J four is a resolution for participation into Florida's Medicaid Managed Care EMS Supplemental Payment Program. Say that three times fast.
Read one of our resolutions and we'll talk.
So I'll give you a little background. Medicaid currently pays about $138 for a transport of a Medicaid patient to a hospital. That does not near cover the cost of that transport. So about three years ago, we entered into a program called the P E M T Program, which is the Public Emergency Medical Transport Program, which uses public expenditures to reimburse transport agencies for the cost of Medicaid patients. It's been pretty successful. We've received about $200,000 a year since the inception of that program. Not an earth-shattering amount, but it is, it is a supplemental payment for those Medicaid transports, which helps out a lot. Fast forward to now, we were able to, we got wind of a program, a very similar program through the Medicaid Managed Care Organizations, whereas the other program does not handle managed care organizations. This program deals specifically with Medicaid Managed Care Organizations. And so this resolution will give the county manager the authority to make deals with the 10 managed care organizations that we have to deal with, as well as the Agency for Healthcare, the ACHA. And so that's what this resolution will do is, is approve us to enter this program. The program does start in October, so that's why we're coming to the board now. We have, like I said, 10 contracts plus ACHA's contract to, to go over and the county manager will be, if approved, the county manager will be the ultimate authority in terms of approving these contracts for us. If the deal doesn't look like it's, like it's going to be good for us, then we can back out and, and no harm done.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Lober, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Item J five.
Item J five deals with the Internal Audit Committee. The terms of four of the members have expired and what you see in this agenda request, we made a request of the committee members. Three of them were willing to continue serving on the committee, including the committee chair on there. You'll see he's been with the committee since 2004. Two of the other members have been there since 2012. We did have one committee member, Mark Cherry, who indicated that he was not interested in continuing to serve, so, but he would stay until a, another appointment is made by the board. So option number one gives the board the opportunity to reappoint three of the committee members and then authorize staff to go out and advertise for another qualified committee member and we will bring those names back to the board for your consideration to appoint someone. The fifth committee member's term is not up, so that's where we are. Alternatively, if the board was not interested in reappointing, that you have option number two, which we could authorize us to go out and seek advertisement for multiple vacancies so the board could consider appointing other people to the committee. We thought option one may be the better option for the board since, similar to the Citizens' Budget Review Committee, this committee having a longer-standing knowledge base in terms of how risk audits occur, how they select them, et cetera, has been advantageous and the committee's been doing a, a rather good job for the board over the last few years, so we're looking for board direction on this item.
You want to speak before the card?
Either way.
Mr. Ellsworth?
989 North Highway A1A, Indy Atlantic. Madam Chairman and Commissioners, I want to thank county manager for bringing this topic up and asking for direction on it since it's been in abeyance for nine months. It was somebody's duty nine months ago to reappoint people and they weren't reappointed. And the question that was, first question that county manager brings up is the, the appointment of four internal audit committee positions who have been working unappointed for eight, for nine months. The second question was concerning the current members, whether they can continue in their capacities at the same time that this cause for delay has not been addressed. The third thing about the term limits restrictions and whether they can be waived, I'll deal with in a little bit. The options given on the reappointment, advertisement and reappointment of several more that were given to you by the county manager, I'll try to deal with. It, it looks like the, the delay is a, is a, an appearance of a burden shift. Somebody's trying to put the burden back on the board for self-audit damages, damages that have created during this period of time and nobody's wanting to take the ball. And county manager's bringing this up. It looks like to me that, and I've talked to D five and D two and some other of you folks about these matters, asking for materials. It looks to me like the bank contractor, SunTrust, and the IRS are looking for some audit protection and, and holding a tax exemption as, as a bargaining chip. The contract that was supposed to be up, nobody will produce. Nobody's shown that these people are signing off until they get protection. They're asking for you to take that burden. The board was, had the responsibility on 12/18. One, one, one board member, Mr. Lober, went ahead and appointed Ms. Young at that time. None of the other board members or any board, the board at large, made any other conveyances. So all these other people here have been working. Okay, I'm not done. Thank you.
Commissioner Lober?
Just a, a couple of quick thoughts and I, I appreciate the comment that I went ahead and appointed someone at the time to this particular board. That said, this particular delay is, is largely irrelevant. I would suggest that the folks that have been appointed on there, whose terms appear to have expired, haven't been working unappointed for nine months. They've simply continued to serve in the absence of someone appointing and replacing them. That said, obviously it's before us today. We need to deal with it today. There does appear to be nonetheless a Scrivener's error in the actual agenda item. There's a comment on the cover sheet indicating that one of the individuals doesn't wish to be reappointed, Mr. Miller. It says, Mr. Miller has requested that he not be considered for reappointment, but in the staff recommendation on number one, it asks us to reappoint him along with Mr. Lang and Ms. Stoner. So I have no problem moving to approve the reappointment of Ms. Stoner and Mr. So I have no problem moving to approve the reappointment of Ms. Stoner and Mr. Langk, but I don't want to include in that motion that Mr. Miller be reappointed. I'm not asking that we remove him. I think we can, Mr. Bate?
Let me address that. When we had discussed that, we went back and looked at it. It was actually, it's Mr. Cherry, and so we attached that in a revised agenda that went out.
Oh, okay.
So you will see that Mr. Cherry, and we actually included his email where he asked not to be reappointed. So Mr. Miller, Michael Miller, actually was interested in continuing, and that's why you see that in the revised agenda item. So that was a mistake that occurred in my office when we, when we sent that out.
Okay, well, in that case, I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion to reappoint Mr. Langk, Mr. Miller, and Ms. Stoner.
I second the motion.
I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. No, Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I inquired from staff about the cost for advertising, so as we move forward, should we have to do it? It looks, it looks as though what I got returned was when we advertised for a Nina River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee, the advertising for the first run was $1,340. The second run was $808, and the North Brevard Hospital District, when we had to do that, it was $540. So I know there's advertising that we may have to look at as we move forward. I just want to bring that to you guys' consideration, you know, with this or anything as we move forward, that when it says advertising, there is a substantial cost associated with that.
That cost is disgusting. It's a requirement that we advertise that way, but yet, yeah. Commissioner Loeb?
I would just suggest when we're advertising something, and I'm not saying that's the case here, where there is not a legal duty or obligation for us to advertise, that we keep an open mind as to, with which particular media outlet or outlets we want to advertise, because I think there's perhaps some savings to be had by shopping around. I'm not going to suggest one over another, but I think staff can, can do their due diligence when pricing things out for something that would be beneficial to advertise but not required.
We will be certain to do that.
Thank you.
Item J6.
All right, I'm going to make this pretty quick. I don't see anyone here on the item. Move to adopt and approve.
I second the motion.
I have a motion to approve item J6. That's a resolution in recognition of the 108th National Day of Republic of Taiwan and her achievements. Just in case anybody was wondering, I don't want anybody to think we were just sneaking things through. So I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Pritchett. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Never know. Okay, item J7.
Afternoon Commissioners. This item seeks to make an amendment to an action you took back in May. At that time, we asked the board to take several actions to facilitate moving forward with a, the creation of 60 units of affordable senior housing in Melbourne. It was a grant through Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery, passing through the county to the Melbourne Housing Authority. At that time, one of the actions was to allow me, as a department director, to sign a subcontract with the Melbourne Housing Authority for those funds. Subsequently, the state DEO, Department of Economic Opportunity, decided that they wanted an interlocal agreement instead. So we've worked with the county attorney's office to get a draft of that, but also in consultation with the county attorney's office, it was determined that I don't have the authority under that previous approval to sign an interlocal agreement. So this item is bringing forward that interlocal to allow the county manager to sign it.
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item J8.
Hey, Jeff.
There we go. Good afternoon Commissioners. The last item on your agenda is a request to exercise the last, I mean, the first option year for our Spectrum Bright House contract. This is for voice and network services. In February, you voted to extend their initial contract by three months to allow them to complete their installation, and they have one site left, which is the Moore Justice Center, and we are requesting to approve the first option year.
I'm going to go ahead and move to approve. I do want to note that they've been much better with keeping to their schedule than they were in prior times, so although we're not necessarily exactly where we want to be, we're pretty close.
Motion by Commissioner Loeb, second by Commissioner Smith. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And I have no public comment cards, and I think it's the first time that's ever happened.
Wow.
At least since I've been chair. Probably, period. I don't, I don't know if I've ever been in a meeting where we haven't had public comment cards, correct? At least during the second session. Board reports? Mr. Bate?
No report.
Ms. Bentley?
Just very briefly, just so you all can be somewhat prepared for scheduling purposes, it looks like we have several lawsuits that are coming to a point where we're going to be needing executive sessions in the next month or two. So you'll be seeing requests for that, and I'll coordinate with the county manager to see how it can work best with your schedules.
Great. Ms. Pritchett?
No report.
Mr. Loeb?
Actually, I want to thank Commissioner Pritchett. She saved me from having a lengthier report today by including her resolution on Constitution Week. Had a whole thing I was considering putting on here, but I think it's important that we all reflect during this week on the rights that we have in this country and the freedoms that we enjoy that a lot of folks elsewhere don't. I'm not going to go into which particular rights are more important than others, but I think it's a really remarkable thing that we do have the freedoms that we do in this country, and we should all be happy and thankful for it.
Commissioner Tabia?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I think we broke records today with the number of resolutions, and we had some pretty wonderful people. But I, one person that didn't get mentioned today and who's probably done just as much or more than anything else, she's dealt with me for a total of 41 years, is my mom. Today is her, her birthday, and I just want to send her out birthday wishes and note-
Second?
Yes. Note that it would be unfair of me to do this without throwing this out there, but I will. It is another great woman's birthday today, someone that sits up here, and I will leave it at that.
It's got to be Rita. No, I'm just kidding. Commissioner Smith?
Yeah, in view of the comments just made by Commissioner Tabia, I want to commend his mother too, because she put up with him for 41 years.
That's pretty good.
She's a saint.
I'll jump in just for a second.
Commissioner Pritchett?
I just want to say happy birthday, Commissioner Christina Znardi.
Thank you.
And I hope you have a wonderful birthday and lots of donuts.
Amen.
There's never enough donuts. And thank you, everyone, for a nice, smooth meeting, and thanks again to staff for, for just being you and for being so responsive to our office and to our constituents. And with that, I want to call this meeting adjourned.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, or the program's sponsor, and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television, and the program's sponsor hereby expressly disclaim any and all responsibility or liability for any defamatory or slanderous statements expressed by any member of the public during any such period.